Okay, if everybody will please stand. We'll have Mr. Jordan going to have our invitation and after that we'll have Clay.
Yes, pray. Father Lord, we've come this morning just thank you, Lord, for blessing us to see another day. And we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to come together and conduct the business of the county. We ask, Lord, that you bless and guide our decisions that they'll be for the best for the citizens of this county. Lord, we thank you for all the grace and mercy that you bestowed upon us. And, Lord, we just ask your blessings and graces as we approach the impending storm. Lord, that you would just bless us through it and keep us in your care. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, at this time I'll call the Board of Commissioners of Gates County for our regular October 5th, 2016 meeting to order. First item on the business is approval of amendments for the special meeting on September 7th, 2016, the regular meeting on September 7th, 2016, and the regular meeting on September 19th, 2016. Are there any corrections to the amendments?
Ma'am Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the amendments as modified with the corrections that were submitted for the dates that you mentioned.
Okay, the motion's been made. I'm here at second.
Sorry.
Motion's been made and properly second. All those as favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, next item on the business is the agenda, and we do have several adjustments to be made to the agenda. If you look at the number seven, old business, we would like to add for seven, CAC. Number eight, personnel board recommendation about finance officer. And those numbers would, you know, change that. Under revenue number eight, we would like to add number 12, the reappointment of Kathy Lane as tax manager.
Is 12 or 10?
Well, we did seven with CAC and eight's personnel, that goes down to 11, 12. Try to make it consistent. Do I hear a motion to adjust the agenda?
So, second.
Okay, a motion's been made. Seven, all those as favor approval of the agenda as adjusted, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, moving on. Revenue number four, the agenda of delegations, unites delegations. If you have anyone on the list. Okay. Mr. Hill, Thomas Hill, if you will please come forward and state your name and address for us. And anyone who wants to speak without a name and address, it helps work with the record. Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. My name is Thomas Hill. I reside at 3860 Detroit Court Street here in North Carolina, Gates County. Wanted to come up to discuss two very important things. One, Election Day, November 8th. I want to make sure that everybody knows that my personal endorsements as the Republican Chair of Gates County is on Facebook. You can find my name as well as the Gates County Republican group page for the endorsements there up. We've had people such as Judge Richard Beetz in the county, Senator Bill Kirk and others, and we look forward to continually working with them after Election Day and look forward to seeing them in the future. My second part of the agenda is a little more curious. Chris Hoffman, you also are on the ballot. And as you all are on the ballot, you asked for a fair election. The problem with these fair elections is you have not given the materials or the items needed for the Board of Elections to proceed in a very fair way. Their phone lines is not to the standard where it needs to be, it's quite some standards. Second off, the cameras that's inside the Board of Elections building is not there. There's no safety. And if you ask for the Sheriff's Department to do that on their limited budget, of course, you'll be expanding the government. And I don't think that the sheriff, being an elected official himself, should have the right to constantly stand duby in the Board of Elections office. It has also been brought to my attention that the county manager's office has been notified of these items of business and has not been sufficiently handled. Is this because the Republicans are in the majority of the Board of Elections office? Is this a problem with the personnel that works there? You know, this is very troubling as an NLLCP member and as also the Republican Chair of Gates County. I would ask that these items be taken care of immediately as of yesterday. Get the phone lines working. Get cameras up there for the safety of those young ladies that are working in the office counting your votes. And if you were there with no cameras, if you were there with not sufficient telephone lines, would you feel safe being in that building? So I would be glad to your attention that these items need to be looked at with great caution. So I would ask that you all take care of that. Is there anything on the agenda that you all have to put phone lines in there and cameras up for safety?
They do have telephone lines. And as received, as it's been communicated with the Board of Elections and to the Commissioners, there were never any plans to put cameras in there, and that's how I'm going to address right now.
Okay, as far as the telephone lines, I understand if I call, and let's say you call, your phone call cannot be through or connected to them because I'm on the line with them. So their phone calls is not being answered in a proper manner because the phone lines are not properly installed. You all had promised them at one point in time that the old courthouse across the street that at one time we didn't have the money to rebuild. Now it's being built. It's being fixed up. It's being addressed, if you will. Well, they've been promised at one time that building. Then you ship them down the street as if their service to the county is not warranted. So I just would like to know if in that building, do you all plan on putting better phone lines in there? Because if I call and you call, only one of us is going to be able to get through with the other having a busy signature. I also asked for a notary. She doesn't have the ability to notarize. She has to come to your office. So for that, that also seems to be a problem. If I have a Republican who wants to vote absentee or needs a notary for that reason for voting, Tia in the office cannot perform that duty. She has not supplied proper materials. So is there anything that you all can do for her for that specific need for an accountant? Or does she have to ask for another part of the county for you all to supply that service? I think there is substandard treatment being delivered to the Board of Elections. But yet we ask them to perform this fair election on Election Day. If she doesn't have the materials, how can she perform that duty?
I think this is something that's been brought to our attention, and we need time to take a look at it and digest and see which way to go ahead.
I understand. If I may, I would like to appoint Mr. Jordan. Sir, we've had four years. Graham Swine sat where Mrs. Hoffman is now and put together a whole courthouse committee that you and I served on. Sir, with all due respect, we haven't met in over two years. You have the time. So if this doesn't get situated, I will have no choice but to call the State Board of Elections and report you all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Ms. Howell.
Good morning. I'm Ann Howell, 49, Charlotte, North Carolina, Democratic Party. I am a CAC member, and as you can see, we have a little representation here this morning for CAC and the church ambassadors. We are asked to give an annual report. I don't know that this has been done before in this manner, but we're learning as we go along. Every time we meet with someone from district or state, we learn more things. Do you have the annual, a copy of the annual report?
No, that was received after the packets were put out, and I was saving it for the next meeting, so I can work with that too.
Okay, well, if I may go over this report, and I'll let you know that the members of the CAC are Vivian Hathaway Parker, Margaret Witherspoon, Fay Smith, all of the kids who could not be here this morning. And Bernice Johnson is the newest member who has been appointed to the joint committee, which you did at the last meeting because of the Gates House being added to our duties. This is the annual report, Adult Care Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Gates County, reporting year fiscal year 2016. The chairperson is Vivian Hathaway, and I have given you the names of the other members. Questions on this report. Were all the homes in the county served by the committee? No, because until Bernice was appointed last meeting, we could not officially go in the Gates House. We will be doing that this quarter. And that is stated here written out as to why we had not done that. Describe the educational efforts by the committee. Our CAC has ongoing community educational training plus involvement by the not-for-profit 501(c) for energy we established in May 2015 for, amid other purposes, serving to enhance the quality and quantity of life of and for residents residing within our Gates County's nursing and adult care homes. The same thing is for the community involvement. Describe problems encountered by the committee. Problems that we have come up with and discussed with the administrators, these items have been taken care of. Was the committee involved in grievance resolution during the year? No, we did not have any problem along that line. Summarize the strengths and weaknesses of the facilities. Down East, the staff turnover is tremendous. I think all of us are very much aware of that. We had an interim administrator who seemed to have turned things around drastically the time he was here. I don't know how many of you know, but Down East has been sold or gained Ultra Care of New York, I believe is the new owners that took over. The acting administrator was still there, I believe, last Thursday when I talked with him. He was supposed to have been gone as of Monday a week ago. He said there were just some things, final things that had to be signed, and he would be leaving anyway because he had to go to Texas by the 12th of this month. I do not know who the new administrator is. I don't know if there is one left. We will be at the home tomorrow for a program, so we will be getting more information then. The activity van that is at the nursing home, I don't really know how much use they get out of it, but to us, it does not appear that it's being used as it was planned to be used or as much as it was planned to be used. So we hope that that can be effectively used and with more outreach for the residents of the home with their activities. The community at large and other activities for ambulatory residents who can be served will be by this center's van as well. I know that some of the residents, the families can come in and take them out because the other day I was in there to see one, and he was out that day with a family member. And Down East, they do not have a multipurpose room, which we feel there's a great need for that. I don't know that it will be given, but we would like to see that. The air conditioning, when we have people in the dining room, does not seem sufficient. We had a program, well, we had a cookout earlier, and we have another one planned this year, this month. And that room was filled with people. And the air conditioning does not seem to be taking care of what it needs. And again, I mentioned the multipurpose room. If there was another room that we would have to be able to have programs and not have to be in the dining room, which sometimes it's kind of hectic when they have to clean up from one meal, and we go in and have the program, and then they have to get ready for dinner. So there are a lot of things that a multipurpose room would serve in there. Better lighting, and this, I'm speaking of outside lighting. There's not much light there when you go at night. And if there are some that are congregating outside, and we do know that sometimes there are several that will gather outside, we're not sure whether they should even be there or not. During the day, I know that some of the family members go to visit their relatives, and then maybe two or three of you will be outside talking, and that's fine. But what we're speaking of is when we see ones that we're not sure really need to be there, congregating outside with not very good lighting. The building is old. We know that. It desperately needs rework. The work the maintenance people have done great. They painted, they cleaned, but the building itself is old. Excuse me. But the staff morale with this interim administrator has been great. Things have changed. You go in, he's walking around the halls, he's talking with people, he's talking with the workers. It has been great. I just wish he could have stayed. He was from Charlotte, and of course, we know he was filling in, but it was great to see the changes that had been made while he was there. Other comments. The joint CAC does not have any except we need our local county government to strongly reconsider monetary reimbursement of our necessary and reasonable out-of-pocket expenses. We understand this may be addressed at the Commissioner's October 5th meeting. That statement came because I was at the last Commissioner's meeting, and it was tabled until this meeting. The regional ombudsman will distribute this report to the county commissioners, the county Department of Social Services, and the Division of Aging. And this was prepared by all the members gathering together and putting input, but it was still dialed by Fay Dorn Smith, vice chairperson. And I thank you. One other thing, at Gates House, well, Karen Morris, the Activity Director at Down East, has resigned, and Tracy, who was a volunteer, is in training, but she has also been hired as the Activity Director. And I have met the new administrator from Gates House just briefly, but we will be getting in touch with them, and we will be carrying out our duties. Are there any questions? And I'm sorry, you didn't have a report.
Actually, it was submitted electronically to them.
To them?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, and thank you for the work that your committee does. Certainly, we need always to have eyes and ears and boots on the brain in these places to make sure that things are getting done to improve the lives of the people who are there. And we do appreciate your efforts. Certainly, as I was shining down, there's something room for improvement, and that's always the case. And we hope that these issues can be addressed and that a new administrator will come on that will continue the work of the incumbent. Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
And we want to discuss your proposal in the old business, I believe.
Thank you.
And Anthony Saunders.
Ma'am Chairman, before I speak, could I approach you for one minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Anthony Saunders, chairman of the East County Democratic Party. Also, like you know, I have some concerns about the location of where the Board of Elections is now. The Board invites us, he's chairman of the Republican Party, I'm chairman of the Democratic Party, and on occasion, they invite us to come sit in on some of the meetings. Governor, evening. We were there, and we had some discussion about possible lighting. And matter of fact, if you come in the door where the ramp is, and they're all, all we have to do at the end, if you come in, they don't have a clerk who's in the middle. Matter of fact, I stopped by one day, and I just stood in the hallway purposely about 10 minutes, and they didn't even know I was there. So I just wanted to bring up, I won't ruin that depth that Mr. Hill went into. Well, a second, safety is our concern. If there's somewhere in the budget, somewhere, we even discussed about maybe wanting some cameras. I mean, that's how serious it is, because you've got three ladies that work down there. And one quick example would be if somebody could rob a family dollar and stop by there, hide out for a while, and might never see them because they're isolated outside. So we're just asking if you consider some type of security, whether it be cameras, whether it be latched doors or whatever, something to give them a little more safety, a little more comfort, because they are on outskirts in the big city centers. So we ask that you, the Board would take some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is anyone else, public comment? Then we'll move on to unites delegations. Evelyn Walton from Gates Coordinator. She's with Trillium, and we accept the playground that you have provided certainly has been used quite extensively, and a lot of corporate class comments. So thank you, your organization, for giving us that word.
My name is Evelyn Walton, 123 Court Street, Road Court Street, North Carolina. I am gas coordinator, which is geriatric adult specialist coordinator. What I do is I go into long-term care facilities, and I train and educate the staff on how to care for our older adults with dementia. I also provide consultation to family members on how they can provide for their loved ones that are beginning to have dementia. I also am a licensed clinical addiction specialist, so I talk with nursing facilities about substance abuse problems. We're now seeing in nursing facilities. It was there first, but now it's more prominent, so I also train them on that. Let me tell you a little bit about Trillium. We are local government agency. We service 24 counties. We service mental illness, substance abuse, and intellectual developmental disabilities. We are state and federal funded. We also manage Medicaid dollars, and we also service people that are uninsured as well as those who cannot afford services. We do not provide direct services anymore. We have providers in our network who we contract with that will give services to the people that need it, whether their needs may be, whether it is development, intellectual development, mental illness, or substance abuse. We make sure that these people are getting the right services at the right time for what their needs may be. We also work with nonprofits, hospitals, community agencies, so that we don't have to have these emergency room visits, which can be quite costly and time-consuming. One of the things that we have is mobile crisis. Mobile crisis will come out to you and reach you where you are, which will keep you out of that hospital. We also have CIT, which we train police officers so they know how to prevent crisis with our consumers on the outside. I know you hear all this media about individuals that are mentally ill and our police officers are not handling it well. We teach them prevention skills as well as educational skills. We embrace that crisis solution initiative. We have many places where you can receive crisis intervention. We have mobile crisis. We have facility crisis basis. We also have the new telemarketing, telepsychiatry. I'm not, with telepsychiatry, because we have a lot of remote country areas where people can't get to see a psychiatrist, so what we have telepsychiatry in 13 counties. One of the hard-hit counties that we have is Hyde County that is so remote, but because they can, we can get to Elizabeth City, we have telepsychiatry there. We also have the NC Start Program, and you know, that's where for intellectual development adults that are 18 and over, we teach them skills on how to prevent crisis, what's to happen when it's going on in a crisis. We also do consultation there as well so that they'll know how to handle crises. One of the biggest things with Trillium is that we train people on how to handle crises, how to stop the crisis. You know, years ago, and I worked crisis years ago, where you had to come into the mental health facility, and you had to be sat there for hours until I found you were there. We don't do that anymore. We can handle that across through our crisis line. We have a 24-hour crisis line, 365 days a year. The staff are well-trained people who can defer a crisis really quick. Now, we have what we call urgent, which has to be done within two hours, emergent within 24 hours, and a routine of 14 days. You can access care through our crisis line as well. If you need a provider for different services, whether it be mental health, substance abuse, or ADD, we provide those services. Also, if you having some issues with, okay, let me stop back. First, we do not have a provider in Gates County. Your closest provider you're going to have is you go towards the Hostie Way or you can go towards Elizabeth City. But we have nothing in Gates County right now. We did at some point, but they left. So if we need, and at any point, you can call our crisis line, and we're going to connect you to the closest and the fastest place that we can. Now, you could go to a provider if we do have a provider and see them as well, but you, and I will be first to tell you, you will come out a whole lot quicker if you call our crisis line because we have a certain amount of time to get you an appointment. One of the other things I need to remind you is because that we don't do direct care, a lot of people call, come to the old mental health office in a Hostie, and we have to turn you away because we cannot give you direct care anymore. We have to send you to a provider out in our network because I work at a Hostie office a lot. As a matter of fact, let's say somebody came to the other one and substance abuse issue, help. But that's real easy to do because port is right on the grounds there where the old mental health office used to be. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Could you give us a number that we could call if we needed to have someone?
I would be glad to give you a number, and I would be glad to lease some cards as well.
Okay, I'll clear you straight up so that we know. That is wonderful information about the services that you provide.
The number, our toll-free number is 1-877-685-241. You can access that anytime of the day. It's always a well-trained staff there who can answer any question that you have.
But do you have any literature on dementia, how family members can begin to detect early stages, or anything you have that you could rely?
I have some information in card already there. I have some.
Do you ever do like a workshop or a program in communities about these different issues like dementia?
I am, I am, I have a training for this area of 10 counties. If anyone needs any type of training, just give me a call, and it doesn't matter what. I don't have to go in long-term care facilities. Right now, I can go into any facility, any community organization in Congress about dementia or anything about tril- Right now, I can go into any facility, any, um, community organization and talk about dementia or anything about Trillium.
Oh, I mean, to make the public more aware of your, um, what you can do.
Yes, I can. Now, there's one little small issue. As of November the third, I retire.
Well, congratulations, but.
There is a replacement, there is going to be a replacement, but I still can, and Trillium has allowed me to continue to talk into areas if I want to.
Okay, great. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I have a question, um, do you have a number that you can provide if we want to call you to have you come to, if you need?
I would leave my card in here as well.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Good information.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you did in your group.
If I may also, uh, thank Trillium, uh, y'all that allowed me to sit on the floor, uh, with Trillium, and also on the human rights. One thing that I learned that might be interesting to, to our group here, to all our citizens, is that we have the greatest substance abuse from the age eighteen to the age thirty-two from I-95 east as anywhere in the United States. So, uh, that's been addressed. The other thing I'd like to do is thank you for the Crisis Center. Our sheriff is very aware of it, and our sheriff's department has been using the, uh, the Crisis Intervention Group quite readily. I have asked, uh, checking the figures, is that we are not given what happens in Virginia if anyone is, uh, is goes to Centura, Obese, or somewhere else. Those figures are not reflected in reports that sheriff gets or anyone else. Do you know where they may be kept? I've asked that question.
You might call the crisis line and ask for, I forget the name, I'll talk, I'll come to you in a minute. Ask for the director of our crisis line, she may give those figures for you. But Nina, Nina's on.
Well, that's very disturbing, that statistic you just.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Uh, about substance abuse in that age bracket.
And if I, if I may point out, in the lobby, we do now have a kiosk that's been provided by Trillium that's available for the citizens to use and access some of the information that Ms. Walton just discussed as well.
It's available, it's, you know, courthouse is open most all the time during the day, that you can come in and sit down and go for a, for a call. Thank you once again. Thank you for the work.
I want to thank Ms. Harvey for responding to my request to come to the fourth floor, and, uh, thank you for that great information. I was kind of hoping that we could have gotten a little bit on that dementia piece, but anyway, it's available upon request, so we can, we can, uh, contact you, and, uh, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us through, um, room number four, the delegations moving to room number five, administrative reports, starting by County Manager.
This is the report for August nineteenth through September twenty-second. For the spray field update, Mike Calester provides schematics for the spray field. He was unable to attend today, but he said that he will be in attendance on November the first. And at your spot today, there is a permit that we received at the end of last week, reflects this from Dina, and it is for the wastewater spray irrigation system logistics of the Stormwater Project permit. And Mike has received copies of all of the permits, and he will be here, like I said, on November first, meaning answering questions. For the historic courthouse, Amherst Corporation was to remove the bricks between the twenty-sixth and October seventh. They came last week and removed them, and they were supposed to be delivered yesterday to WJE. An offer was made and accepted for the wastewater system operator position, and Tiffany Ben began work on Monday, October the third in that position. During the report period, I personally handled fifteen calls related to zoning maps and specialties permits. Due to lack of business, the Board of Adjustment and Planning Board did not meet in September. The Planning Board has included the proposed solar farm text amendments in their packet, and that is on the agenda. I have also included at your seat the active codes enforcement complaint list from Mike Barber. On August the twenty-second, Sandy Pittman and I represented, or presented the Essential Single Family Rehabilitation Law Program 2016 information to the Housing Committee. The committee agreed an outside administrator was needed for the program, and that was approved, as you're aware, at the last meeting in August. Uh, August thirty-first, Sandy Pittman and I met with Mike Barnett at McDavid Associates to discuss administration of this, of the Essential Single Family Rehabilitation Law Program. On September the ninth, Timothy, Timothy Hinchcliffe, Mike Calester and I met to review the plans developed for the spray field, and the schematics are in my office. On September the fourteenth, Gates County JCPC met to review the council's purpose for fiscal year seventeen and funded program. On September the twentieth, I met with economic developers from the Hartford, Berthe, and Halifax counties, as well as an EDPNC representative to discuss next steps with the Hope County Department campaign. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
The schematics from Mike, are they electronic or?
No, sir.
They are all hard copy?
They're hard copy.
Uh, also, where are we on the interviews for plan?
We have not conducted any, we are waiting to, um, receive enough applications and a qualified application tool to proceed.
Have started to see any applicants?
We have received three to date.
Any other questions? Thank you, County Manager. Um, finance, any questions with Ms. Pittman? You've got all the easy today. Okay, tax?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Walton.
First of all, uh, the finance report was, uh, had some eligibility problems, pages were cut off.
That, that was my fault, and I acknowledged that in email, but I did sin.
You all had received those reports earlier in the month, anyway, electronic.
Well, yeah, but the hard copy, it's, you know, you're doing this, absolutely, it's a little tedious going back and forth, but I just want to bring that to attention.
Do you need hard copies? I can certainly print your hard copy at some point today and have it for you before you leave here.
Well, we, we do need, um, full disclosure of what's on the papers.
Yeah, like you said, you received electronics, and I did apologize to them email that, once they were on print at that, and most people had already picked theirs up, that the problem was discovered.
I must've been one of the lucky ones, I got time to stop later. But, but anyway.
I've got, I've got print copies.
If you'll print copies, I'll, print four copies, I'll see. Okay, uh, and thank you for bringing that attention, and, uh, for determining the details. Uh, tax, Ms. Lane.
Hey, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Had a chance to initially, kind of, kind of a cool agenda with the tax, if you will, initially the collecting report. Um, we received that, and any specific questions on that report for September?
I see we received a substantial amount from Zakiya's Legal Services.
Oh, yes, ma'am, that is correct. That has been, um, I would say eighty percent of, um, the daily activity, if you will. Those, those phones are ringing, uh, people are now getting those demand letters that they receive, or out of those, um, they've been served their papers, so they're getting a bit excited. Um, we had one, uh, property that had some delinquency on back on Sainte-Croix, and we've just now got a response via interpreter from the taxpayer, you know, someone that, uh, lives in Virginia Beach, but his interpreter did call, so that's one, we'll get that check Friday. That's been in delinquency for a good number of years, so, uh, that, so Kias, uh, the, the phone calls, those demand letters, there's something about receiving it on probably letterhead from Zakiya's Legal Services that, you know, it gives that kind of, uh, excitability with folks, so, yes, I'm.
That, which is, that number is four thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and forty-two cents from them.
Actually, that's the amount.
Twenty-six thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, that.
Oh, oh, yes.
Yeah, those are, uh, services paid back to Zakiya's service, yes.
I was on the wrong line, twenty-six thousand, two sixty-three, fifty-one. Do you know, off the top of your head, how many files they closed?
Um, not right all, but it could be in the neighborhood of at, at least eight, that I'm aware of. Uh, and, and some of those are the newer accounts, uh, if you remember, the board approved, uh, a new batch, uh, our third assignment, uh, since, uh, Deputy Tax Collector, Lord Chase, and, uh, within here, a lot of those were from that latest batch, um, that, you know, we've seen some good response, so that's a good portion of that number. Um, you know, about eight, eight accounts, if you will, um, with some good response, though.
So, it looks like we actually, right this way, write them a check for forty-seven forty?
In, in addition to.
They don't take it out of our?
That's right, yes, an additional charge, and some of that is for, um, some, um, the services through Zakiya's based on the contract that was signed back in two thousand and ten when we, uh, originated our relationship with Zakiya's. And those fees are kind of in that contract, um, that, you know, we, we agreed upon with their services. Any additional questions there on the collecting report?
We're, we don't have a percentage of collection.
You will not know, sir, until we, we post those to the general levy and get the, you know, for the, for the new charge amount for the, uh, the levy that will add when the notices, uh, are generated. You'll have the percentages start appearing with that. Um, yes, sir. Um, you do see the prior years, obviously, uh, with the delinquency, uh, with regard to amount and the percentage collected through those. Uh, they also include personal property, the D and B, but that's just for prior years. So, we'll, that'll appear, Commissioner Owens, as soon as we get that, you know, posted, yes, sir. We anticipate very soon, hopefully, on that, with, barring any other delays naturally, we, we hope to get those out.
We don't have anything here for Ellis, so we don't have any accounts with him anymore.
Uh, we do not, um, and, uh, per the county attorney, uh, Mr. Goff, I think he advised that that email was sufficient enough, if you will, that was my big concern, um, that would serve as any official letter from, um, the Ellis Law Firm. That email would constitute our, our, um, relationship, if you will, that contract being, being severed. And no additional charges would be in terms of center county. So, those three accounts, um, that we did have, everything is, is closed on those, and we've tagged them. At any point, we want to re, I would say, negotiate and have those submitted to Zakiya's as an option. Uh, I would be a little hesitant, because they've been, uh, so problematic for a, a good number of years anyway. So, we'll, we'll certainly, we target those, Mr. Jordan, we, we, you know, we identify those properties, they're just very difficult. I would hate for the county to invest additional funds, if you will, and have them sent to Zakiya's, knowing that, you know, the issue that, that is with them. But at some point, we can, we can revisit that, if you're paying.
Um, concerning tax, or, or night, we have a date that they might go out, type of tax bill.
Uh, yes, the tax notes, just may, uh, not a specific date, uh, we, we're hoping in the next two and a half weeks, um, just may have check, for, for those, really, you know, it, it, no other plan that is ensuing, um, we really do. Because I'm, I'm achieving that role of, of trying to get those, and, and I can only speak that, um, I'm, I'm relieved, I guess, you know, with those, we hit the button.
I'm particularly want that, but I kind of need to know.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Uh, we, we have, you know, um, with the prepayments, they have continued those individuals who traditionally pay, who've gotten those, and they're posting accordingly, so there's been no interruption with that. And, and my apologies for, you know, all the delay, we hope by this point, certainly, um, but we're, we're not there yet, but, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that, don't you have something else?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we got kind of a, some other lines. You did see, I just sent an email and I provided additional hard copy just regarding the public service evaluation. Uh, every year, of course, we get those out from the Department of Revenue based on the value of all utilities, uh, within the county and the town Gatesville. Um, we did see a little bit of increase with the levy and valuation, uh, for the county, and a very slight for the town based on those items that are listed in the town Gatesville. We had, uh, value increase, uh, a little over two-point-three million with, uh, utilities reported for the county. Uh, chief among that was, uh, Roanoke EMC with some valuation, I think some work they're doing, and continue to do with some fiber optics and internet, uh, servicing, um, so that was also included. Some of the others depreciated based on the valuation amounts reported to the Department of Revenue. And like I said, we, we never see, the county traditionally never sees any of that, um, valuation, particular to machinery and equipment, they all report that to DOR, so, um, they, the DOR in turn provides us with that valuation amount every year. And beside that, you can see the projected tax bill with the new rate as to what that new bill will entail, and that writing comes there. And it's like the board always, you know, just useful information, certainly, of the city, and we get that every, every fall about this time of the year.
Just a little quick math in my head, it looks somewhere between three-hundred-and-fifty and a half million dollars total levy, would you say?
Um, that is correct, based on the, the total amount, um, for, and this is just utilities, yes, sir.
So, that, that represents a fairly significant, uh, percentage of our, of total annual, uh, property tax. Probably something somewhere around ten percent.
Yes, sir, at least that, and like I said, a good, a good portion, um, with the, the Roanoke, um, the natural gas, um, with the, the, um, increase they would have. Um, some of the other things depreciate a little bit heavier than others, also the cell towers with the new, new additions, certainly, in the county, that adds valuation, yes, sir. Okay, that was, um, in addition to, uh, I just want to note on the foreclosure properties, the three that are due for sale on next week, uh, we, myself, um, Director of Building and Grounds, Crystal Blue Phillips, I'm not sure if Crystal's here, and Nathan Riddick were a great assistance Monday morning in helping getting the three signs to post those properties. Um, I did send letters to surrounding taxpayers, letting them know, first of all, that the issue was at hand, uh, and to invite them, if they will, if that was an interest that they have, and we, we've had, had some calls, actually, people that are interested in, in absorbing that property, uh, interested in bid information, and I directed them to the Zakiya's website, um, you know, the tax office, we can field any questions. More specific charges and, uh, specific information, we can, we can point that in the direction of, um, Sheri and the gang at, at New Zakiya's, they're kind of all points there. Those charges will continue, there'll be some, a couple other, uh, attorney fees, publication charges as we get into next week, so, we do have a kind of a raw amount in our office, if you will, initial bid price, but we don't want to say that's the final price, because there'll be some, um, probably some finality with that into next week. So, I just want to thank, um, uh, Phillips and Nathan for all their work and helping with those, um, a couple of large signs and, and everything got this posted Monday morning, so, thank you to the, to the.
Did you, you state any date of the, the foreclosure, all three will take place the same day?
They did, on September fourteenth, yes, that courthouse.
Friday, please.
Could you explain for us and citizens, when these properties were sold, let's say the winning bid price is just worth a number, let's say five thousand dollars, and property tax own, own that property, uh, let's say it's three thousand dollars, how much will we win better to pay for that property?
Well, also, in that equation is the, um, final amount of sixteen taxes, uh, any, because technically they're, they're now due, so those are added to the tally, too, Commissioner Jordan. Um, and, and overall, and there's a process, there is a ten-day window to also upset any bid, uh, if you will. bid, if you will. In terms of the percentage amount, I mean, it could be, let's say, delinquencies, as you mentioned, if we're eight thousand dollars, additional charges from the law firm, or let's say, another three hundred, publication and so forth, then the sixteen taxes also added with that. And then there, you know, if that bid is, is met, if you will, there'll be a ten-day upset bid process, and then they continue. What we don't want to see, obviously, is the county to, you know, have, have that in their realm. We would like to see those back on the books in terms of going through that process with a ten-day upset bid, and somebody comes back and offers three thousand more, or if you will.
Well, just for a clarification, let's say we go through ten days. No one upsets the five thousand dollar bid. All right, you've got three thousand dollar county taxes, local taxes, maybe they have some attorney fees, I'd say it's another thousand dollars. That's four thousand dollars. The winning bid is five thousand. So do you only pay five thousand for the property and the four thousand's taken out of the five, or did you have to pay five thousand plus the four thousand for the taxes and the thousand dollars for the attorney fee?
Yeah, if your bid, if you submit that bid for five thousand, that's, that's an essential bid. And, you know, yes.
And that comes, in other words.
That's right.
All of that will come out of the five thousand. If the five thousand doesn't make it up, let's say if it came to eight thousand, then the bid would have to pay another three thousand.
Yeah, that is correct. And I think there was some language, I actually took the liberty of looking at the contract information just briefly. It did, it did sum up, if you will. The county manager and the tax office will submit, actually, the budget amendments. If the bid is not upset for the county to retain that for that period of ten days, if you will, just to hold it in kind of a nest around the umbrella. Now, what we want to see, as I mentioned, an interested taxpayer and joining tax center absorb that. So, but if your bid is five thousand, you don't, you don't step back down to what was already offered here. If your bid is five, it becomes yours with all the charges, with all the lanes encompassed thereof.
Just to be clear, I don't, what we, does it?
Is the bill five or not?
Does the five thousand take care of all of the outstanding taxes?
Yes, it may. Yes, sir. If, if there are no additional charges, quite possibly, yes. If that's the example where you.
Within the five thousand?
Yes, it is. Yes, sir. Yes, that would incorporate everything to date, including charges, publication, the sixteen taxes, since we're using that example. Yes, sir. You'd be pretty clear, that would be the transfer, the ownership change, if you will, would reflect, follow suit. But, but yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Something else?
Well, yes, ma'am. You did receive the schedule or values. There will be some needs on board to schedule some dates by general statutes for advertising purposes. You know, it's initially presented, then you advertise to the public hearings. And I've got some mixed references.
Well, I think you can, go ahead and tell us what your date form would be with it now.
Okay. Well, in terms of the initial. Now, the advertising, it can be scheduled for the twelfth in Gates Index regarding the public hearings. The, the public hearing, technically, by law, cannot happen before October seventeenth. Now, that's the first scenario with the public hearing on the October seventeenth. And then there are twenty-one days that we must, at least the twenty-one, by general statutes, of course, adopt. So within that twenty-one days, you know, we've got the public hearing, obviously, with the advertising. We could not adopt, the commissioners certainly adopt and schedule no sooner than October twenty-fourth. That's, that's the first scenario. And I realize, you know, getting it scheduled today and having the chance to look through. There is a highlight, highlighted tab I just wanted to bring to the board's mission, like I said, with the, the chain and the value. The green tab that you see is associated with the solar farm and cell tower sites, which is completely new for us with the reappraisal here at Gates. We're allocating commercial sites for those properties. So I realize that's a lot to digest and with the dates at hand. But technically, advertising, we couldn't, you know, the public hearing could not take place before October seventeenth. If we went into the next month, of course, the public hearing would be on October twenty-sixth. And this is probably the maximum window we would like to see. We would like to schedule adopted. If we delay it further, because we want to get the notices out, the new valuation notices, probably later than the second or third week of February. So we're kind of on a, you know, adoption of the schedule. We have a timeframe. We could adopt the schedule November second. That would give the board more time. So those are kind of two, two scenarios. A public hearing on the seventeenth of October, the schedule was adopted on the twenty-fourth. The second one, the public hearing, would be on the twenty-sixth of October, and it would be adopted at the next morning, you know, November second. Those are kind of two.
The morning meeting will be November the first.
November the first. All right, okay. All right, what?
Public hearing on the twenty-sixth.
Well, in that case, well, we're back at it, just to have a window. The public hearing then on October twenty-fifth, and then the adoption. Thank you, County Manager, for that. So those two scenarios. To stay kind of on the course, if you will, so the public has a chance to review them. We, we have a schedule that the county manager will have on display. Also, at the tax office, the public will have a chance to come through and look at those, ask any questions. Particularly with the solar farm and cell tower sites, those values that we put on those, that information, I did send out letters in May and June to try and elicit some response from those property owners and having those solar sites and cell towers. Those lease agreements, obviously, that dollar amount is not in the memorandum of lease, if you were to look online. They just don't have that. And we reached out with them to ask if they would provide a, a valuation, if you will, to better assist us. I can say today, I've got, I got one response, if you will, from the cell tower in Riddles and Town Shills. They are very useful information. That's only one, no other additional response. So those values that you see earmarked with the fluorescent tab or values generated based on Department of Revenue standards, rates per acre, as well as joining counties. And I think they're really conservative. But like I said, we're not having any response back. We were limited in a database, if you will. So we were still conservative with those. But that's what we're prepared to allocate per acre. And that will apply times the number of acres for each site, particularly in solar farms. If it's seventy acres, that'll get applied to that table rate of eight thousand. I just want to point that out to the board, so that will become a part of our new manual and our method of evaluation in our county system.
Okay, so we can't have a public hearing until October seventeenth for adwords.
That is correct.
The ads could go in the paper on October twelfth.
Yes, ma'am.
So we need to make that decision today so that we can get the advertisements done and get this project moving forward. What is the closure of the board?
I'm sure I recommend October twenty-fifth, public hearing. What time would be?
Twenty-fifth.
It's a Tuesday.
So Tuesday, and then November first and Tuesday.
And November first is our regular meeting, that we could approve it.
Yes, that is correct. Yes, ma'am.
What is the, I know that some of us have, I mean, Melissa Jordan, if you don't you can, I was saying.
On Tuesday, so it doesn't happen.
Like, what time, how much time do you think this will take?
Depending on the, the public response, it may not take much time at all. I've certainly seen an occasion where it's, it's rather quick. And if you, you open the, the form, if anybody disputes any item, if you will, it could be relatively smooth, just a matter of opening for the public hearing, if I have any concerns.
Would four o'clock be convenient, or it's not convenient for the public, but we want it to be convenient for the public as well?
Yes, ma'am.
I think four thirty, that should probably get them to come and say what they hear.
Okay, would, would October twenty-fifth, four thirty, be, could be, I mean, four o'clock, me?
October, come date, that day.
Mr. Freeman?
Sixteen thirty, October, I mean, yeah, October twenty-fifth.
He's still on military time. Commissioner Bell? Okay, so BAC, I mean, the board commissioners will have a public hearing on the ord, not ordinance.
Schedule values.
Schedule values at four thirty on Tuesday. And then we will vote upon it at our regular, our meeting, which is going to be on Tuesday, November first.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you can go ahead and have a time. Oh, yeah.
Motion?
I'll go with motion two. Have a public hearing for the scheduled values on October twenty-fifth at four thirty p.m.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second this motion.
Motion's been made, seconded, part of the discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so you'll get the advertisement in the paper.
Yes, ma'am.
And.
Okay. And if the board would have any specific questions on the schedule, feel free, certainly. Yeah, if, if you have any problem, we'll talk about it. Kind of, Mr. advise on the state. Appreciate it, board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports from the departments?
I think, oh, we have some other things. There's a late.
I think that's going to be taken.
Those are later.
Oh, it's later.
The number of lines of tax discovery. Anyone else? Did, I see Crystal come back here. Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, move, I'll handle the public hearings today. Do we need a five-minute stretch?
Yes, please.
Okay, we will have a reset for five minutes. Okay, we are now going to new business. And, no, old business, I'm sorry. We have one more issue. The CAC, we've got information from, that you had on your desk this morning when you came in. Hold on, we have personnel board, excuse me.
And we realized while I go that, I asked to add that again. It's been a long week. I apologize. So number eight will need a little, I'm sorry. Personnel board recommendation is already on there.
Okay, number five. I mean, yes, number five. Okay, personnel board recommendation. Last month, we had a appetite, the changing of the title of the Financial Service Directive to Finance Officer. And certainly, we want to make sure that it was, that what the ramifications of that were. Investigations were made concerning that. And we appreciate, certainly, everything we do, we want to make sure that there is thoroughly vested and we understand what the implications are of that. And if you see the.
Page ninety-two.
Yes, page ninety-two that we have somewhere. Was it not numbered or not? But we can, yeah, see this, the emails, the one that says one fifty-nine dash twenty-four Finance Officer. Each local government and public authority shall appoint a finance officer, the whole office at the pleasure of the appointed board or official. The finance officer may be entitled to pay any treasure, finance director, finance officer, or any officer or descriptive title. The duties of the finance officer may be imposed on the budget officer, officer, or any officer or employee. The duties of the budget officer may be imposed. And so it seems like that it is that we also, kind of, unless we have a county hiring team, why I found out the statements each year rather than contract, I is, as part of the audit. Most small counties and municipalities have the same time in, in the direction of a local government commission. That was a concern. But that is still big. My position has no bearing on this. And it is a recommendation of, yes, sir.
But what, what cost difference is, are we talking about to have a team come in versus having our audit team do it? Are they going to do it at a less cost, lesser cost?
No. When I mention hiring a team, that would mean you would have a division or department of employees who draft your financial statements. Larger counties, Mecklenburg-Wain, they have county employees that draft their statements. Very, very few, if any, small municipal or counties do that because it would take multiple employees.
Well, I guess my question is, when they go in to audit, the way four-site counties do have those, do the audit teams still draft up a financial pool?
No. They audit the financial statements and they audit the processes and the internal controls like they do us. Our entire audit process and financial statements cost less than fifty thousand a year. If you were to hire a team to do this at county employees, they would, they have to be CPAs, they would have to have the specializations, and you would not even hire one of them for that cost.
Well, going back to my initial question, if they did not have to draft the financial statement, would our contract cost be less?
Yes.
How much less would you say?
I would have to pull the contract. It's specified in the contract, maybe half, two-thirds or half. So the savings would be huddled with fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
I'm sure, I don't, I don't have it. I've read all the information. I don't have an issue with changing it. I just want us to be aware of what potential ramifications are. I did look up the duties. There's another general statute that has the duties of the finance officer. And that general statute, one fifty-nine twenty-five, specifically spells out that a finance officer shall keep the accounts of local government, a public authority, and of course, the general statute, the principles of the government, minimum accounting, and the rules and regulations of the commission. So, you know, while anyone can be tasked with the duties of the finance officer, there are specific duties that are designated upon that finance officer. And, you know, as, as, as changes name, it's, it's a matter of semantics. It's not, we're not changing salaries or anything, but at the same time, we are specifying that we have a finance officer. So, you know, we can look at it anywhere we want. But, you know, in the scheme of the whole thing, it really, to me, doesn't really, see where it makes a difference, other than the fact that now we have, you know, someone called finance officer.
I think that when with grants and with various things, like generally speaking on these, where you have to sign the finance officer, finance director, they generally list it as finance officer. And, or do you just make it easier?
If I may, the job, it was also not just the title. Remember, it was also the job description. And the job description did change because it took out some of the references to supervising other departments that she no longer supervises.
You know, and that's the thing, it took out customer service, but it didn't add any tangible duties that I would think would see where would require more tax collection needs.
No, but because Sherry does all the other things that are listed, and do you, and you spoke with the auditors, would you like to share what the auditors said?
Yes, I'm thinking now the auditor, after all this was done, and he sent back an email concurring that the statement that was made is correct, that changing the title and the changes that were made to this position description have no bearing on the finding of the audit.
And I'm going to piggyback on Commissioner Jordan too, I, the general statute one fifty-nine said we must appoint, right, and so...
Yes, sir, and I was appointed in March of two thousand eight, when I made the request to change the position description, it was strictly because the customer service division was still in here, and it was strictly for cleanup like we've done with some of the other job descriptions, I believe, for customer service as well, this one was not done, and in doing that, I asked that the position title be changed back, honestly, just for simplification, and I apologize, had I, had I known there were going to be issues, I would not have made that request, but the main original intent was to remove customer service and move the duties from the job description, because that's been a long part of my department.
That's fine, thank you. Natalie, come in, so we're going to change the title to finance officer.
That's the recommendation, yes.
We, do we, do we need to tweak the job description?
The job description is already in there.
Tweak already, okay.
I mean, if, if we approve, it's...
That's fine, just tweak to take care of this, right? Okay, agreed.
So now the customer service portion, the right to kind of manage, is that correct?
Yep.
Yes, Diane was the department head for that, and then she of course directed it made, that change was made several months ago, last year, actually, I'm sorry, July two thousand fifteen.
But I, like I said, it's, it really doesn't make a lot of difference, I, I, I wish all the board had a chance to take a look at the duties specified, I didn't make enough promises for everybody.
Commissioner Jordan, I see you have some things highlighted there on the general statute, are you thinking that there's some additional duties that this adds?
Well, what that, what this does, what it says is that you shall, it doesn't say they, doesn't, it doesn't say, it doesn't say that it's good to do, but you shall, this finance officer shall keep the accounts of local government and public authority, and of course, the generally accepted principles of the governmental accounting and rules and regulations of the commission, so, when you appoint a finance officer, you're supposed to, they're supposed technically, they're supposed to be able to do that, and, you know, it's, it's almost like, you know, we're saying that, we know we're supposed to do it, but we're not doing it, because it's not cost effective, but at the same time, it doesn't say on this statute that you account with all those other names that you can give that the finance officer, let him do those functions, it doesn't specify them, but it specifically says finance officer, so, I'm just saying that, you know, it puts the county in a position where if the local government commission wanted to challenge it, you know, they probably could, although small counties normally are not expected to meet all of that because it's not cost effective, but at the same time, you know, I just wonder how many small counties are there finance officers named, fresh finance officer, does finance director, accountant, budget officer, as far as that is concerned.
Commissioner Jordan, help me understand this right here, under number one, you've got that highlighted, are you saying there's something in what you highlighted that she's currently not doing?
Well, not preparing financial statements.
Okay.
Right, and it's required according to the duties in the general statute, that you have to, doesn't say you may, but you shall, and so, that's where the violation comes in, although the state does not enforce it because it's not cost effective for the county to do the accounts of small counties.
So you're, what you're doing is you're, if I may, you're, where it says shall keep the accounts, you're using a broader sense of that, saying keeping the accounts is preparing the state.
Right, it prepares the state, and of course, and then all of this is enforced with the general practices, accounting practice, that's set out by the government commission, so...
Well, I would say, you know, this might be a loose determination, but I would say as long as between finance officer and this board, if we have someone fulfilling that, which would be our auditor, fulfilling that responsibility, that, that maybe that addresses that, you heard me say maybe?
Yeah, well, that, that's where we are right now, because what it has placed the county in, it says that the, the board has taken on responsibility, if there's any problems with our financial statements, guess what, they're not going to the county, the finance officer, they're coming to the board, and we've, we've accepted that responsibility, as a result of that, the finance officer is not held accountable for the stakes that could be in those financial statements.
I don't think that's true, I think it is absolutely my responsibility, I just do not have the technical expertise to create the required spreadsheets and formulas to draft those statements, I am not a CPA, I cannot audit my own work anyway, we can go in this system, we can create the financial statements, we provide all the information, what they do is take that information and they put it into the workbooks, that their, their company has spent thousands and thousands and thousands to create those statements, and the statements are done, they came to, come to us, and we review the numbers, and we verify the accuracy of everything in those statements, so it is absolutely my responsibility to account for all the, and to make sure that those reports are correct, and that is what it says in the finding.
Yes, yes.
Yes, absolutely, and at the end of the day, I'm appointed by the board, so, yeah, absolutely, it is also your responsibility, but that doesn't take the responsibility off of me and anybody.
And that takes the responsibility off of us, I mean, we have the responsibility tonight, that the, as we look at the budget, as we read the holiday, we're responsible.
Well, all of us know that we're not going to hire three or four CPA to make a statement, so we're well, we're well beyond that reach, we knew that from the word go, so if we're not going to do that, I think it's duly noted by Commissioner Jordan that, that we've addressed the new title to finance officer, we've looked at the general statute, and we're doing, even with this change, we continue to do what we've been doing for fifty years, and we're doing the same thing that other counties now are doing in our size, because nobody's come forward to hire ten CPAs, so I, I would say, Commissioner Jordan, that, that your comment is correctly, duly noted in our, in our minutes, and, and that we will continue as we are, and, because I mean, it, it's, it's not financially feasible to do what Wake County, Mecklenburg counties do, and, and I don't think we're in violation of anything that you're concerned about.
Well, we're not, they, let me just read, hearing your response, Sandy, let me read the management's response to the board.
I have all that, Mr. Jordan, I think the question is that, I feel like you're questioning my ability to do my job, and if that's in question here, I think this is a conversation for a closed session meeting, that is the feeling that I'm getting, that you don't feel my expertise is adequate to cover what the general statutes require, and if that's the case, we need to move this to a closed session.
Well, I think that's where, that's where the confusion is, we're talking about changing the title.
Correct.
And I'm not questioning your ability, I think you do a great job, but I, I don't think that things should be brought to this board for changes when it doesn't merit a change, and that's what, and that's what I'm looking at right now, I think that it's, you know, maybe I'd like to have the title of, of commissioner extraordinary in New York, just make me feel better, doesn't do anything more for me, and that's what I kind of feel that this change is, you know?
But, like I said, the main change was to remove the customer service duties that are aligned.
Right.
And, and again, I apologize, the, the title does not have to change, we can leave it at financial services director, as it was changed, it was originally finance officer, it was changed during the reorganization, rejoining of the hall of service area, and that is the only reason.
And that's the point, the office, the title was changed, it was at one point, it was changed, and I was just changing it back when we were cleaning up the personnel requirements, and so, if it was fine, pri, if I thought it was fine primarily, I don't see why it's not fine, no, I mean, just the thing.
Well, even if you just took out services, it would be financial director, could be accountant, could be a budget officer, anything, but just for clarification, if you don't mind, Sandy, let me read, I know you have the management response, but let me read that for the board again, it says, management is aware of the weakness, but due to cost versus benefit analysis, it will continue to rely on the external auditor to draft the year end financial statements, the county will exercise due care in reviewing the financial statements drafted by the external auditor, the county acknowledges and accepts responsibility for the accuracy of the audited financial statements, that is a shared responsibility, not just for our finance, financial director, it is a shared responsibility upon this board and all those who are in, in that position of authority, so, yes, we look to you, you're the one who checks us, and if, and if you make a mistake beyond what we're capable of recognizing, then it's on us, that's all I'm saying, because you probably, I'm sure you've got more expertise in, in that than I do, maybe some others on the board that may, may be more capable of, of financial knowledge than that, but, so, we rely on you, but the bottom line is, if it's not right, guess what, LGC's behavior, you board, this board is responsible, and that's, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, I'll, any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion by the chairman, that we follow through with the general statute one fifty-nine and appoint, change the verdict, if you will, and appoint finance officer for the county.
And to change the, are you wanting to include, change the, the job description, take out customer service?
This one.
Okay, a motion is of the fourth board, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and then additional discussion? Hearing none, just want to make sure everybody's clear, the motion before us is that the job description be cleaned up to reflect the duties of the financial officer, finance officer, take out customer service, and changing the title to finance officer, is everybody clear on what we're voting on? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Okay, the next item under old business is the tax amendment for the sole farm, the public hearing, well, the ordinance, everyone has had a chance to read over it, are the, does anyone have any comments concerning the sole ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Felton?
Under J D...
What page, Commissioner?
This is something that we discussed in here before, and it was not included, and the, under B, it said that mine is a guarantee shall be one and a quarter times the estimated decommissioning cost of all fifty thousand dollars, whichever is greater, I think that needs to be clarified a little bit, that the decommissioning cost is just there, and does not take into effect any possible salvage value of any of the equipment that's taken up.
You mean salvage value, we take it for that?
No, no, it does not, it has nothing to do with the salvage...
Stand alone?
It's, it's just, just the cost of, regardless of the salvage.
Would you mind repeating what you, uh, Dave, what?
We're talking about under J, is that right?
J, D.
J D.
In other words, the fifty thousand dollars is a greater amount, and it shall not be reduced by any salvage value.
Well, the fifty thousand is the actual, the ratio of money, it's...
Oh, yeah, whichever is greater, yeah, so, in other words, the decommissioning cost, the guarantee should be fifty thousand dollars, or the actual estimated decommissioning cost, whichever is greater, not to be reduced by any salvage value.
Right.
I wouldn't fight that, Billy. I, I think the fluctuation of the, of the values in the material under the ground can be pretty substantial, something that I've, I've promoted the, in the past, I've promoted the salvage value, and I think it is still a considerable number, but with the fluctuation in the market of copper and that stuff, again, I think it is, it is considerable, with it, in any year would be a considerable number, but, but I won't, I won't fight that, that part of it.
Let me, before we were told by the utility company that this was not feasible, it was something that is basically going to cause the sole companies to basically not be able to come, because of the exorbitant costs, so, we're going to keep it in there, you're basically saying there's nothing in for departments, from my, from my observation, and I thought we were going to allow salvage costs to be taken into consideration, or some are set up anyway, the utility figures we were just given, that this solar incorporated power, I see right here, they have, they're contributing thirteen thousand to, it says five thousand dollars, you know, tax dollars, whatever, but I would prefer to have the sole companies look over this change, and have them weigh in on it, weigh in on the board, and I don't see much change from what we discussed, and I'll, I'll ask me, I thought it was going to be a little more lenient, but it's not, more spread, it's kind of, it looks to me like we're just saying, let's put the sole ordinance out there, and let's put a stop to sole companies even considering coming to the county.
The planning board met, and they said this is their final draft, they will not review anymore, this is their document, they said basically they're finished with it, any changes to be made come from the commissioners, because commissioners have the final say on it, so they decided if you send it back, it will be returned the way it is right now, they've made that clear to me, several of them made it clear at the meeting, and since then, they've made it clear to me, and the sole, this does have to be approved in November at the public hearing, because the sole ordinance... And the sole, this does have to be approved in November at the public hearing, because the sole ordinance does expire, and I have given the exact date.
You know, this is how.
On the seventeenth of November.
This is how bad laws and policies and rules get put in place, to, to, to put the board, give an ultimate ban to the board is whether or not, uh, they're gonna go through, uh, because they're not gonna work on it anymore.
You please remember, they are also working on behalf of the citizens that they represent as well, and that's what they have asked me to do, my everyone.
I think they have worked hard, they have done due diligence, I think, they have met quite extensively, uh, over the past, what, nine?
Over a year, uh, probably over a year now.
Over a year, um, concerning that, you know, we'll have a public hearing, we both yea or nay, um, but, um, you know, we need to get something on the books.
Madam Chairman, I will make a motion that we accept the planning board's recommendation with the stipulation that I spoke of earlier about the salvage value.
Yeah, a motion has been made, do we have a second?
Yes ma'am, Madam Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to, um, send this, present this document for a public hearing, uh, send the public hearing, it'll be November the second.
November the first.
November first, um, to, for the citizens, and anyone concerned who would like to speak for or against the ordinance at that panel. Okay, any further discussion?
Yes ma'am.
Yes sir.
Do we have in print, has anybody provided us with the, with the estimated cost of decommissioning of any site that exists?
No sir.
See, the numbers have been thrown out there, that, uh, that decommissioning of a site is gonna be just an astronomical number, I don't believe that. That is, uh, that is the reason, Billy, Commissioner Felton, that I said that I wouldn't fight that one. I don't believe that the decommissioning of any of these sites is an astronomical number, I really don't believe that it's gonna be, Madam Chairman, but we're sitting here, and nobody presented the number? We don't know what the number.
We didn't know, and that's part of this too, that number, it determines, the next page, that will, the estimate for the decommissioning will be determined by licensed engineer.
Right, but, but, yeah, I understand that, and, and that's good, but, um, I actually received a phone call from one of the companies. And I invited them to get a professional to deliver us, to pick any site, even picking one of their sites, and to deliver to us a, a estimate based on this, uh, C, page ninety-six. So, we could have something to set the bar at, or understand what they would be faced with at the time of decommission. I have not received that, and the reason I asked was in case it came to you, because I didn't, I didn't say send it to me, I said, I invite you to, to find a qualified engineer and present it to us, and so you haven't received it.
No, I've never said that.
Because I believe in the engineer's gonna come out, because see, folks, when you're putting this stuff down, uh, I, I don't know how delicate it is, but when you're taking it up, you know, you're taking it up for scrap and salvage, and you're not gonna be delicate, you're not gonna hire some architect or some engineer, you're gonna, the guy's gonna go in there with a.
Escavator.
Escavator, thank you, and, uh, and whatever, and they're gonna, they're gonna pull it up. And, and when I see the fifty thousand or greater, I just believe, I, I know that, um, you know, if, if they have to get a bond, and that number's around fifty thousand dollars, definitely, they have the privilege, so. And, and this puts it, as our citizens, for that person that landed on around there, we go ahead and go through this document, the people that they are talking to already, they can move forward. And then if they feel like they wanna challenge it, maybe they'll bring, uh, a specific example to us that would make sense, and we'll revisit. Ordinances are, they're not like the ten commandments in the Bible, they can't be changed. But that's my point of discussion.
Okay, any, all discussion? Here or not, um, all those in favor of, uh, bringing up this ordinance for a public hearing with the change that Commissioner Felton has asked, will, if they buy a show, be a right hand, all those who approve, raise your right hand. All those who oppose, okay, we'll schedule a public hearing, advertise us to get the word out.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
That was a unanimous vote, was that?
Correct.
I will add that this was a change of what we previously had, and that's why I'm willing to go along with it. Originally, they said we wanted a bond or a letter, funds shall be pledged to match twenty-five percent of the total cost of the project, and that's what was.
That's what was really astronomical.
Astronomical, and, uh, so I appreciate Commissioner Owens elaborating on that, and, uh, decommissioning should be a fraction of what.
Madam Chair, put the board yield to one question.
One question, yes, will carry it forward.
Yes ma'am. Mr. Jordan, the question's delivered to you, sir. At first, you had reservations with this vote, and then, as Mr. Owens said, it became a unanimous vote. Would you be as so kind as to elaborate why you were, uh, somewhat against this, and then went to this unanimous vote along with the board?
As I just said, our original proposal from the planning board regarding decommissioning was to require a bond or a letter of credit. Uh, and the funds should were to be pledged to match twenty-five percent of the total cost of the project. Solar farm projects can run in millions and millions of dollars, and for a company to put up one million dollars, twenty-five percent of a four or five million dollar project, is, uh, asking quite a bit financially. And it's, it's, it's considered for, and many of you not be able to come and have that kind of cash sitting in escrow, if you will, or limbo. So, the new plan, which I originally felt that we could be a little bit more lenient, but it, it basically says that you will guarantee one and a quarter times of the estimated decommissioning cost. That's just to take it up, not the whole project, and as Commissioner Owens has pointed out, um, that's gonna be a lot less than what it would take to construct a solar farm. So, I'm willing to compromise, sometimes you, uh, you know, in discussions, you bring out things that make you aware that, that you can't compromise, and I'm willing to compromise on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
One other thing, Madam Chairman, I, I don't think we have any members of the planning board here today, but I would just like to go on record that it's commending them for all the hard work they put on this for the last probably eighteen months or so. And they have, I know, personally, they have worked very diligently on this, and have done many hours of study and communication with people from around the country.
Okay, thank you, and, um, you know, I think this is a good example of where compromise can be helpful to move a process forward. Sometimes, I think, I'll state in national, if we learn to work together, to make the best and possibly make it. Okay, moving on, um, the item under number seven, the CAC, um, you have a handout on your table or at your place when we came in, uh, this morning, I hope everyone's had a chance to, uh, read over. We had asked the county manager to find some information out for us concerning, uh, stifling and mileage, uh, surrounding counties, or, or for some additional surrounding counties, and what had originally been reported. As you can see, she had returned that information to us, um, and she also included some remarks that she has been directed to her from the public.
And if I may, just the, for Hertford County, after I sent this out, they did clarify that mileage was paid. And farther down in the west, Washington County, they responded again and said, there is no stifling, and they did not provide mileage.
And which one, Madam?
One, it's Hertford, Hertford County is.
They do pay the.
They do pay the mileage, up there where he said, he thought they did, he had to double check, he said that about five o'clock, or right after five. And then Washington County also responded after I had sent this to you, again, that they did not provide a stifling or mileage.
I might clarify that a stifling not allowed in front of general statute, general statute, uh, one thirty-one E, one twenty-eight, E says that, I've never committed shelter without compensation, but maybe reimbursement for actual purposes is encouraged. And in the form of, of stifling is not something to be considered as reimbursement of the, of their expenses.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board, or is any, what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam?
Uh, well, I was, um, I was wondering if we wanted the county manager to, we have a public here, uh, I was wondering if we'd want to just say that we, we contacted, what, is it, uh, ten?
Ten counties?
We said we exhausted our information.
Well, I don't, wasn't one on that.
We'll just say number one says no, um, one does get mileage, um, one, second one receives mileage, no, uh, no mileage, no stifling. One, another one does mileage, another one does neither, no, 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 the majority does not, uh, the last one, the second page, does twenty dollars per meeting. So, that's the comparison that we're, that we're working with, but again, and I would, uh, say this again, you know, we, we, we research these other counties that are like us and in our area to try to, uh, to drive to be somewhere in line if we can, but ultimately, we are Gates County. So, anyway, just wanted the public to know that they're, they're, they're more than do not provide than do.
Well, but keep in mind, Mr. Ford, a few months ago, I don't know exactly when, and we discussed quite a bit, and there are approximately thirty other boards in the county, volunteer boards, that none of them receive any, any reimbursement compensation. Planning board, the board of adjustment, too, but they are different, different boards completely.
I, I seem to feel that, you know, this is, we're on Gates County, um, we appreciate the service, this is a mandate on the board commissioners to have this committee in place. It's not like, uh, it'd be nice to have a committee, uh, just acquired by the state, general statute is clear, we don't pay a stifling, uh, but you can reimburse the expenses. The, the advisory committee has asked the board to consider it, and I think that, that a mileage reimbursement or a small stifling to cover those expenses maturely, acknowledge our appreciation and understanding that they are making a stifling wise. Cost of gasoline, cost of that time, we're not paying for that time, uh, they're providing the service to our senior citizens of the county, that's a necessary and needed service. Not the state can not do it, I think that, uh, I would like to put forward board that, um, we could have a, um, have it put in a mileage reimbursement, uh, for the month, and, um, you know, we could put a gap on it, reimbursement, not exceed twenty dollars per member, uh, but certainly acknowledge some of the expenses that they're incurring, uh, to get these meetings, and my understanding, a lot of times, they go out in their pockets to, to fund different events and things that are happening at the, uh, various facilities, uh, that they're not reimbursed for, so, I would be in favor of allowing to have some type of, uh, mileage expense reimbursement.
Are you willing to put that in a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that, uh, we implement a mileage reimbursement for the, the CAC, the community advisory council, um, and, and that, uh, mileage reimbursement would be capped at not more than twenty dollars per month.
Okay, a motion has been made, is there a second? Here or not, that motion fails, but the line for second.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to discuss, not the motion, I'd like to discuss what's before us, um, if I were, if I were to make a motion, on the back page, there was one county that said they did it, uh, twenty dollars per meeting. Though the mileage, keeping up with the mileage, doesn't seem like a, a big burden, but it's one more thing, if we're gonna, if we were to cut a check to the volunteers, um, we'd be, it would be something else we'd have to keep up with, mileage. Would we be confirming that, and we'd probably be doing it on a higher system? Commissioner Jordan, in his motion, he mentioned that if you capped at twenty dollars a month, we're probably having more meetings than one a month. But if we, if we did it, uh, at twenty dollars a month, permission, and capped it at that, if we just had, uh, if we, if we were to do that, and we required the chairperson of the committee to present us with a attendance chart, that would, that would just be, uh, something between our county manager, finance, and handing it over to the finance officer to cut a check for the attendees of that meeting. Would be a lot simpler to keep up with, uh, Commissioner Jordan, you didn't get a second, that's the reason I, I didn't give a second, because I was thinking a little bit different, I was waiting for discussion, then we got a second. I could be in favor, uh, of that, and I'll make that in the form of a motion, um, and see where it gets us. Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that, um, we base our reimbursement on a meeting basis, uh, that it be capped at twenty dollars per month, and the document that would determine whether a reimbursement or, I don't wanna use the word stifling, uh, the reimbursement was paid would be based on the document determined by the chairperson of the CAC, that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, that we pay twenty dollars per month to members in attendance to meetings. Now, Commissioner Jordan, did I not hear you say general statutes, we cannot, it's not permissible to pay stifling?
That's right.
So, what are we gonna call this?
Well, it's, it's an expense, it says you can pay the expense, but maybe a reimbursement amount of actual expenses incurred by the, in the form of their dues.
Actual expenses.
That's gonna be the, the amount.
That's a little tricky, actual expenses, that, that word, uh, if somebody looks at that, actual expenses, it would be twenty dollars per month, per person. Um, but, but, you know, they do a, a wonderful job, and certainly, both of us as a pack people and regimental care, we know that those committees are important, they bring forth grievances, or to see things that, you know, everybody doesn't have family members going in every day, to help, to make sure proper protocols being. day to help, to make sure proper protocols being performed and, uh, uh, this gets a little dicey for me, and I'm just speaking to myself, because we have this committee, but then we have this nonprofit organization, uh, one of the church ambassadors, and they are the same membership. So what hat is, are you wearing when you go in? And that gets me, that's kind of, it's not sort of-
May I, may I answer that question? Uh, when we go in as CAC members to do our unannounced visits and that sort of thing, we are CAC members. When we go in for friendly visit or a cook eye or whatever, that's church ambassadors, it's two separate entities.
Okay, and so you, uh, so when you go in to make your official, uh, visits, do you have a badge you wear?
Yes. I started to put mine on this morning, but I thought better of it, because I didn't know whether the other ones were.
That is, you know, it's a little dicey, because it's such a horrible law, too.
And I, I can certainly appreciate where these officers come from, and I will say, the board in the past, we have discussed and considered all the numbers of committees and the, and the people on the committees and how big this thing could grow to. But that is also, in my motion, I tied it to a meeting and I tied it to attendance, so...
An official meeting?
An official meeting. And that's the reason I, I did that, I knew that that, and if it was capped at twenty dollars, uh, and Comer- as Commissioner Jordan pointed out, it is, uh, a committee that we're mandated to establish. But, uh, but the people are not employees, they are volunteers. So that, you know, that is a slippery slope, and the actual expenses, that's a, that's an interesting, uh, uh, term in the general statute over here. Well, see, we have a motion and a second, okay?
We have a motion and a second, and we-
A little discussion, too.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I, what a, what an important organization it is and what important duties that you do, and those volunteer efforts, not only families as well as the clients or patients, uh, that, that we recognize and we hear in our, in movement around, I know my colleagues do as well as myself, and we also see and hear in the church and how important it is, and it's just, uh, it, it is a burden on us, if you will, uh, in weighing that with all the other volunteer organizations, and that's what we have struggled with initially, with Commissioner Jordan bringing it to us, because we want to do it so badly. However, uh, struggling with that and then knowing all the other volunteer organizations and where it might lead to in a day-to-day discussion as well as what its cost prohibitive as far as our finance officer, uh, and then cutting checks and this, that, and the hate to think about it in such a manner would be such good volunteers, so, uh, just want to let you know where our hearts, or at least where my heart stands against thinking of everybody else, but I think I can feel it there.
May I say something, come on?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you speaking of when we do our official visit or when we have our official meetings?
Uh, my, my motion was based in terms of a meeting.
Meeting. Would quarterly be simpler than monthly? We have a quarterly report that we do, that's the reason I ask that question.
Um, you know, I, Commissioner Freeman, I think it's for all four, you know, it is, we appreciate it and, you know, you're doing a wonderful job, and I think Commissioner Felton mentioned you have thirty to all committees, and that's really a slippery slope, when you do one for one and not for the others, and I don't know where, where the line is, because all of them are self-important, some might not meet as frequently as others, uh, some probably meet as, more frequently.
But how many, how many mandated committees do we have that we don't provide some type of reimbursement for?
Soul and War on Conservation Committee, they are elected, I don't think we provide any funds for them. ABC Board is, uh-
Probably appointed, or like-
They are appointed, they're, they are appointed by us. I mean, we have a whole list, I can't name them all right now off the top of my head.
Yeah, there's some of them that they don't need, there's all of them.
And I believe so.
You know, I just feel that you have a board that have come to you and, uh, who added a new, uh, facility in the county. It is somewhat taxing, uh, it requires an effort on their parts, uh, which is probably more demanding than some of the other committees. You know, I serve on committees that I don't give reimbursement for, but at the same time, you know, I've never asked, like, since we've been with that, uh, they have asked, I, I think that the amount of time they put in it, uh, the efforts, you know, drives them to do this, I think that, you know, we should give it some consideration. Recognizing, Commissioner Owens' motion, I, I second it and I agree with it, and I hear what you're saying, Chairman, uh, I would ask, Commissioner Owens, while we're going to ask him to verify attendance, uh, could the chief that has turned in verify that, mileage incurred, uh, would represent at least twenty dollars reimbursement, because the guy stays within the general statute, and, uh, there was some clarification there coming by the Chair, uh, Chair, uh, Chairley, uh, I think that would cover it from a legal standpoint, that, uh, that the chair would verify that, we won't have to-
Actually, the individual will need to, we require anybody that is being reimbursed, they would have to verify their actual expenditures, what they have actually spent, and they'll have to sign off verifying that, that it needs that twenty dollars amount before the finance office would be able to cut the check, and I'm, I'm sorry, Jack, I-
No, it's okay.
I mean, to undercut your motion, I was kind of waiting for y'all to finish discussing, but the finance office would require that, and we do that with everybody, even Board of Elections, when there are people turn in reimbursements for mileage, we require them to sign off on that, the board, the board chair is not allowed to sign off, we require the individual receiving the funds to sign off that their actual eligible expenses to be reimbursed.
But, um, Saint, let me ask, uh, we, it's not approved yet? But if it were to be approved, the motion were to be approved, would your office provide a form for, to turn in for the reimbursement, so it doesn't have to recreate that idea?
Sure, we could come up with something, and, and the other thing is, we wouldn't have, before we could do anything, we would have to do a budget and appropriate forms, because they're not appropriated.
Would you have a preference, if the motion is approved, whether you receive the documentation monthly or quarterly?
Quarterly is always easier, but at the same time, if it's something that is going to create hardship on somebody, we can certainly do it monthly, whichever way works best for the individual, and it can make the work.
You know, the, uh, appreciating what everybody has said, there is, uh, we're talking about attendance at a meeting, and while their meeting is very important, it's not as important as, I'm just going to say, the twenty trips a month that they're going to make to the nursing. And I don't know if that's the right number, but I'm just going to say that number. But if it's ten trips from just about anywhere in the county, they'll come up with that, and it's, it's very worthy what they're doing. This is a very slippery slope, so, uh, I just want to say to my fellow commissioners, regardless how the vote goes, we have to vote our conscience, and nobody up here should feel guilty or anything, because we, this is not the first time this has been discussed, it's been talked about in closed session, I believe, a couple of times, and then just in general conversation amongst, um, because we, you know, I've made a comment that this is one of those things that you don't let it set precedence. In other words, if, if this, if another committee comes up here, I'm going to look at that committee on its own merit, not that any of them, uh, you know, don't qualify or do qualify, but I'm going to look at every scenario, I'm not going to let this vote and this decision set precedence for me on the next request for the same thing, I'm going to look at each one individually. So I just want everybody to know, and I want citizens to know, if somebody up here does not vote for this motion, they're voting what they think is right for the situation, just like I'm telling you, the next situation may be different for me. So I want everybody to understand that, and I respect how the vote goes. Uh, Madam Chairman, I would like to revise my motion, um, to include a required mileage documentation that form be provided by Sandy, uh, Finance Officer, and, um, and that, uh, they be turned in on a quarterly basis. And that cap, just to reiterate the cap, uh, in the motion is twenty dollars per month. Madam Chairman, uh, I would like to put an effective date, uh, beginning on that, November one.
Okay, as you heard our finance officer say, there is nothing in the budget at this time, I believe there are seven members on that committee?
Six.
Six? Okay, six, that's a hundred and twenty dollars, uh, that could be, and so that would be, that would be four hundred and forty dollars, I mean, one thousand, four hundred and forty dollar expenditure per year, uh, concerning that, so that everybody knows what cost factor would be. Any additional comments or questions?
Jack, well, I'm looking for one that I haven't thought about, but it, you told me, the last thing you mentioned, Jack, is considering each one individually, which of course you have to do, but what would you do when the, just say ABC Board, I think, for, for an example, would come up and say, well, I'm a volunteer too, you said these volunteers are worth money, I'm not, you're a hero, so I withdraw my volunteer, volunteer duty, and you just go find somebody else.
Yeah, I, I understand, and like I said, it's a slippery slope, and I would, uh, Commissioner Felton, I would just have to, just reiterate, uh, the comment I made before, I'll look at each one and, um, and what the motion made, I'll just, I'll just have to suck it up and vote whichever way I feel feels right.
I think so. Just personally, I'm raised in the same position, just about, I've been a volunteer in carpetball for thirty-six years, it's never received an opinion, never asked for an opinion, never wanted an opinion. I do it for the love of my community, and that's the only payback I want.
I don't, I want back correction, I do know my math, it's twenty-four hundred dollars a year. A hundred and twenty times, uh, no, a hundred and twenty times twelve, I'm right first time. Uh, I'm sorry, it's been, yeah, I'm right first time. I should have stopped while I was ahead.
And I, I'd just like to say that, when you serve on committees, uh, Commissioner Felton, you're, you're right, it's usually because of the best, best interest and your concern about serving, and, uh, that's, that's the bottom line. That's why you serve. Generally, when we serve on committees, we don't normally take on committees that are going to, uh, take quite a bit about time, in other words, you've got something you can, you can invest into a committee, into a community without, uh, jeopardizing quality of your life, but so much. And I, I will say that this committee is a little, a little unique. It requires quite a bit more input than, um, regular committees, and, um, I don't think, they're not asking for, uh, reimbursements for all that they did, but just some type of, of, uh, compensation for expenses that, that, uh, gives them some consideration for what they are putting into this. So I think this is a little, a little unique, if others would come in and, and try to justify and take the ABC Board and whatever, like I said, they may be four times a year. And I don't think that, uh, and most of those are served because they have best interests in the community, they want to be a part of making sure that decisions that are made, uh, are, are decisions that are consistent, what's going to be the best interest of the county. So, you know, I think this is, as, as Commissioner Owens has said, you know, this is a, a individual consideration, it's not a precedent, but many times you have to look at it just like, just like that, you have to look at it individually, and I think that's where this is, uh, is a consideration, is a consideration for what, what is being expended to, uh, provide service as needed.
Okay, Mr., Commissioner Owens has changed his original, um, uh, motion, do you confirm with that?
Yes, I concur, I concur.
Okay, so, to make it clear, well, the motion before us is that we would, uh, that we would have a mileage form that was created by our finance office that would read, that would record their mileage, and it would be turned in quarterly, and it would be twenty dollars per month max, and that it would be effective on twenty sixteen, November first, twenty sixteen. That is the motion that we're going to be voting on, is there any other comments before we vote? Okay? All those who approve that motion, uh, raise your right hand. Okay? All those who oppose that motion, raise their right hand. Okay, motion fails three to two.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah?
Thank you, and we didn't realize it was going to call, I was just much confusion.
Well, it's-
We thought we asked, you don't get if you don't ask.
And that's true, I, for me, it's just a slippery slope with all the other-
I realize that.
I, I know what you do, and you, and you do it for the love of, you know, you have to do it whether you get paid or not get paid, and, uh-
And, and Madam Chairman, may I add too, and listen both to Commissioner Jordan and Commissioner Owens too, on merit, and we place you certainly at the pinnacle of merit, and, and, uh, the reason we, we may not look at that is that if the budget changes, as, as I learned a long time ago, maybe playing ball, coach told me to keep on shooting, if I didn't hit my first shots, uh, basketball, if I didn't keep shooting, I wouldn't go and score, and if they wanted to, they'd say, no performance available from me, I had to keep going to fall up, so don't stop coming.
And I think at budget time, it might be at another time, because the budget, we are really concerned about budget, coming budget with some of the things that are coming up, with revow all the schools and all, you can't spend the money at once.
Thank you for consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to our last, uh, we did, did all the, um, old business, moving to number eight, new business, we have, um, Ms. Pippin is up with budget amendment.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm very busy, I'm very far from paper and working on my tablet for the first time, so, um, are we going to do these together or do you want to do them individually?
All of them are for the extension, no, three of them are extension, because we do three extension ones together.
How would you, how would you like the two of them?
Two are for extension, the first two.
Well, I have three.
These are numbers eight through twelve, correct?
I have eight, nine, and ten are all extension.
Wait, I apologize, right, eight, nine, and ten are- Wait, I apologize, right, eight, nine, and ten are extension, that's right. Can we do those three together?
I think we can do those three together.
Number eight is to budget for return of unused grant revenue. We received Genesis grant funding that was not expended last year, and we need to pull that out of fund balance and send that back to the state. We can assure that that will not happen again.
Please do not do that. Hate to send any money back.
Exactly. Number nine is budgeting for anticipated increased revenue for the school age childcare program. They anticipate increased revenues and the expenditures tied to it.
Okay, increased program supplies.
Correct.
Okay.
And number ten?
Ten is not, that was a typo, it's prepared by Helen, but that was in the state business for emergency management.
Okay, we'll do, okay, we'll go back and do eight and nine. Do I have a motion to approve the refund for the Genesis program? And then the changing the budget for school age childcare, it has been increased $4,000 for, for supplies.
So, move.
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, emergency management.
Ten and eleven are both covering grants for emergency management. Number ten is to budget for grant receipt for purchase of a new search and rescue trailer. And number eleven is to budget for additional funding for the generator transfer switch project, which has been going on for several years now. This money will be used to purchase an additional generator.
Okay, hopefully we will not need it this weekend. The storm, Matthew will not visit. Okay, so, we have two concerning emergency management. As you see, entertain a motion by changing, I mean, for the grant of a trailer, uh, to $29,000 for, um, increase the, um, that, and that the homeland security for the, by generator switch.
So, I make the motion, we approve those two budget items.
So, is that-
Okay, motion's been made and seconded that we approved the two budget items requested by emergency management for a generator, a switch, and a trailer, support trailer grant. Comment, yes?
Yes, just for the audience, um, we're, these are grants.
Correct, there's no county funding, it's not, correct.
Any other additional comments? And that's a good point to make, this is money coming in, I mean, grants that the county has received. Emergency management has been very good at finding monies that we could not afford otherwise.
Correct, and the generator transfer switch project has been a regional project, so there have been multiple counties in northeast North Carolina that have benefited from that project. We just act as the financing agent so that all the money runs through, and Billy just worked really hard to work with the other counties to make that beneficial for everyone.
And we share resources with all the counties if there's a natural disaster or any type of problem. If it's in another county, we said, "I'll, I'll equip, they reciprocate with us as well." Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and those two are approved.
Number twelve, the last one, is to appropriate money from fund balance that was set aside for equipment replacement when the fitness center was created at the community center. The original revenues that we received for the first four or five years, all of that revenue was set aside for future equipment replacement that is in our fund balance, informally reserved for this purpose. I believe there's about $130,000 that's sitting in now. They've indicated they need to replace two treadmills, is that right, Natalie?
Yes.
This will more than cover that, this actually will probably cover twice that, but we're going to make sure that, that we've got money available because the two were going, they were all purchased at about the same time. So, we expect there to be more maybe through the year. So, we requested that we appropriate $25,000 of that money for equipment replacement now and for this fiscal year.
Okay.
So, will, does that mean we'll, they save those two items on gov, gov.com?
No, they're actually trading them in.
Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Say it.
Okay, I would like to comment, one treadmill is broken completely, because I was like, I go like that, and all of them kind of self-starts. So, when you get on it, both be ready to go. So, uh, it'll be appreciated, a lot of people would appreciate those being back in service. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Now we have a G.I.T.S. has a surplus item to put on gov, no?
Yes, G.I.T.S. has a van that they would like to sell on gov deals. They've already received a replacement for this van because it has met the life expectancy under the DMT requirements.
On a monthly basis, right?
Yes, on a monthly basis.
Okay, this was purchased in 2008, because, yeah?
No, it's 2011.
It'd be sold for a minimum of $6,500. What's the pleasure forward?
The motion that we place the surplus on gov deals and question, agree with it.
Hear a second?
Second, that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to put the 2011 Ford conversion van on gov deals to be sold as surplus. Any comments? Hear none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Uh, and G.I.T.S., I was in Gates in the afternoon, and they were backing out someone's home. And, you know, I mean, we're getting the person in, and, you know, it's nice to see that we have that surplus available. Okay, um, we do have, uh, number ten is tax discovery appeals.
My, hello again. We did receive some information regarding discovery. That's why there were two discoveries, and one might ask, "What is a discovery?" The machinery act reminds us that a discovery, 105273, discovery is termed as any property not initially listed for taxation, listed at a substantial understatement, or number three, listed under an exemption or an exclusion that they previously didn't qualify for. In this case, I see Ms., the property owner is with us this morning. In this case, we never accounted for the dwelling that had been in place since '07. We had the land evaluation, if you will, but we did not render any information on the, in this case, the double I. So, my visit out there, first part of September, was to render a sketch, come back and data enter all that information into the county system, and then I generated the value. With, with that in mind, I also followed up with some phone calls because this sometimes is shocking to give a discovery bill, "How, how do you miss my house?" Well, it happens rarely, but it does happen. You know, several counties have gone through spells where they, they either undocumented or permitting or communication within various offices does not happen, so you may miss some. In this case, I came back and computed the information, and I sent that notice out, that discovery letter, if you will, and includes a penalty. It was not for the 16 year because we're going to correct that for 16, and it'll be billed accordingly. So, we're talking 15, 14, 13, 12, if you will, all those prior years previously with a penalty. If you've got those copies there, I see, here's what felt, here's what's putting in there. Okay, so, you can imagine the penalty accumulates and then levy according to what the tax rate would be for each year. Now, in saying that with the discovery, it is unique, the Board of County Commissioners and the time when the Board of E and R is not in session, if you will, the county commissioners has a good bit of latitude and waiving any and all, you know, pursuant to general statutes of that penalty or that discovery bill. And that's kind of where we're here this morning, and I see the property owner, Ms. Spence is here with us. I don't know if she would like, like to speak. That's kind of the foundation of where we were at with that.
And Ms. Spence, would you like to speak to the board?
Yes, I would.
I'm sure that was a shocking letter to get.
Yes. Yes, ma'am, good afternoon.
Uh, are you?
Um, yes, it was a very much shocking to me. But I would like the commissioners to please have mercy on me because, like I said, I have no idea how this got slipped under the world. I have my documents here of occupancy of, um-
The gentleman in the office, yeah.
From my, um, company that's handling my mortgage statements, and here's a certificate for occupancy. I have the papers here where registered these from the office of Gates County, all of this was sent to me from the, um, mortgage company. So, I have no idea why this was overlooked.
And you say your situation is an escrow payment from your-
Yes, sir, it is. So, to my knowledge, I'm doing what I'm supposed to do. When my payments come in, I make my payments, and at the end of the year, the taxes is made to Gates County office. And I have a copy of the escrow analysis and all that, so I don't know why it wasn't reported.
Uh, and the esc, I mean, your mortgage company has taken out the money to pay your taxes.
Well, as I know, that's what they're doing, and when I get my statement saying the taxes is due, it's, it's paid to Gates County.
Okay, um, Mrs. Lane, have you received the check from the mortgage?
Oh, we have, yes, yes indeed. And actually, um, we have been receiving payment. However, based on only the valuation of $17,315, which is only, only the land. And we have, based on that government mill mortgage, they, government, much, much like CoreLogic, they're a handling firm, if you will. So, the tax bill was only $110.82. Now, I can assure you that your dwelling in place is going to be more than $110. So, Ms. Spence is correct, and the mortgage company has been paying. And I've got printouts of every single year, I can assure you. But they only paid on that valuation amount.
Can I say something, please?
Uh huh.
Okay, she's saying the $17,000 on my statement is about what I, the tax that made the amount that I borrowed from. There's no paperwork saying $17,000. Our paperwork's saying over $80,000, so where are they getting $17,000 from?
Well, that's the valuation of your property.
Delay, delay.
But on my paperwork, it's not, it's nothing saying $17,000. It's eighty-something thousand dollars or more.
That's right, and I've actually pulled your deed of trust, which is public, on the public deeds website. Anybody can visit that. And I see where your, your deed of trust was, as you said, more substantial than the $17,000. And I don't have any comment on what the mortgage company was charging you or what they were taking out from Esper. I can assure you, they weren't sending us the full amount, only the land. So, I don't, I don't want to get into any details of what they were taking out from you, but they certainly were only sending us for the land.
Do you have any idea how much they were taking out each one for the, the mortgage companies taking out? Do you know how much they were taking out for the nest?
No, they couldn't give you that.
Because they, if they take night more and sending us less, they are holding the money. And you, you are the, you know, you're the victim.
Yeah, and we, we did speak, Ms. Spence and I, we visited on the, back in that one Friday, we had a chance to visit her sister of kin, and we had a good over-two-hour conversation. And I asked, "Was there any deed appraisal ever done?" This would have revealed the fact that they're, they're substantially under what the valuation. You know, now we're looking at with the double I in place, certainly. And we didn't think there would be a appraisal in place. That would have helped clarify some things, but-
Yeah, we think the audience would be out.
That's right. They, they apparently never questioned the valuation amount of the property, and so.
Is that a unique situation?
It is, and I think-
It is.
Ms. Lane, I see that, now, by the paper here, you put the general statute down there.
Yes, yes, sir, and, and there, as I told Ms. Spence, when we spoke, there, there is plenty of laps here with the board.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that.
I did reassure her of that based on the discovery and the general statute.
I just think that this is a very, a unique case, and I think that we have to have compassion. She was doing what, everything right on her part. She thought she was paying, somehow things fall through cracks sometimes. And I think we can correct it and move forward with the correct figures. I would think that women, we should show compassion and about what, what's gone on in the past. We can't not hold her responsible.
And each situation poses its own merit, and certainly does not reflect to me, not speaking for everyone else, of course, speaking for myself, that, that she was aware of that and that she should be held responsible.
Because if you look at her statement that she showed, it shows Esper, you know, and a might being taken out. I can, and when she got the tax bill, it was paid.
Yes, and, and quite frankly, oftentimes, Madam Chairman, a lot, I would say, a lot of individuals maybe don't look at their tax card. They may not know they've got a frame, a building that got destroyed in the storm that they may still be paying on. And the reappraisal was the chief highlight of how this happened. As, I will say, we do have another discovery that whatever the board would prefer, we would continue that same to set a precedent, whether it be waiving the penalty, if you will, or the entire thing. I certainly would hope we would follow suit and just, you know-
What comment, any discovery, do you think we have?
Well, we have another modular in addition to Ms. Spence, so, um, and we, we did actually have one additional one on fifty row. However, that one was a combination of things. That's been resolved outside of the commission, you know, table. So, technically, there've been, we've got reasons for them.
So, I understand you're right, and it's no question that we have the latitude to forgive the penalty.
Well, yes, and-
Those back years.
Yes, that's right.
We can waive the, waive the penalty.
For back years.
For all the back years we're over.
So, that would be 11, 12, 13, 14, 15?
And fifteen.
That is correct, and that is quite, it's a, it's a graded, graded amount, 10 and 20% based on number of years this may- I've got the total penalty if we want to look at that total.
I see. If our sheet is, you'll embrace this too?
This is sheet-
$897.65 would be the total penalty.
But we, we can also, we can also forgive the back year taxes as well.
You can, yes, because in general statutes, it's a completely discretionary position for the board. Any and all, whether it's all the penalty or, as you said, Mr. Jordan, any previous year, so.
I think under these circumstances, and maybe it can come up again where the taxpayer was not aware and that funds were being appropriated for it, and however, they were insufficient because it's only for the land. I think in those cases, we should give consideration and, and relieve, you know, as, as a policy. And, uh-
Some counties have done that, yes, sir.
And, you know, in this situation, I, I would, I'm sure it would favor, Madam Chairman, moving forward to relieve the penalties and the, uh, the back taxes for those previous years with starting now with a full tax amount for the whole.
Yes, that, that's correct. She'll be, she'll get her bill for this cycle, or it'll be sent to the mortgage company, and it's going to include every, everything that's in-
She'll receive her bill just like when I receive my bill sometime.
Yes, yes, it is. That's correct, with the correct number.
November, I guess, October, November. Yeah, I'm rude awake, but anyway. Okay, uh, do I have- Okay, uh, do I have?
No, it's actual version.
Yeah, I need a motion.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion. I'll add to that, in accordance with general statute, one oh five, uh, three fifty-two. I'm sorry. Uh, one oh five, three twelve K.
And I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded that we, um, do not penalize Ms. Spence for this tax errors for twenty eleven through twenty fifteen. Uh, any additional comments?
And that is to forgive the levy as well as the penalty.
Levy as well as penalty. Okay, yes, ma'am.
I just want to interject with the other so-called discovery. If that's going to be our policy, certainly that would be included. That was a property on Garden Lane or...
Well, did they have the documentation? I mean, Ms. Spence has a bunch of documentation from the mortgage company and that they were taking the money out of it and...
Um, they, oddly enough, have the same thing, the same situation. It was just the land valuation regarding that modular. So it's kind of the same.
And did they have a mortgage?
Uh, yes, and they're not here with us, so, um, but...
And that is which one is that one?
That is the eleven Garden Lane property.
It's the, uh, parcel number ten dash zero two three eight six. It's the one immediately behind.
I have, uh, ten zero two four nine eight.
Okay, that is Ms. Riddick and Kay Evans.
That is correct, yes. Uh, it is basically the same scenario. Their property was set up in Esper, much like this case. Um, their property had their, um, infillings. They felt the valuation, oddly enough, I don't know how, I don't know how. That was another aspect that they felt had included the property. But they thought they were paying the total amount. So I will echo, even though the taxpayer's not here with us today, I'm just wanting to, you know... But we've also met, Ms. Riddick and I had a chance to meet one afternoon and to speak about Iowa, about the situation. So it's the same scenario, and she's not here with us.
And in regards to that too, Ms. Lane, and through Mr. Jordan's comment, as well as the chairman mentioning that it would be a policy. Uh, could we include that the, our tax administrator reviews that and sees that it does meet the policy that we're going forward with? And then subsequently, the levies and penalties would be forgotten?
Quite possibly, uh...
May I interject just something? Um, Ms. Lane, as I see both of these occurred in twenty eleven, and I believe if I recall correctly, we were in the midst of some personnel changeover during that time period. And, uh, the changeover from Calhoun to Oregon and all that, where it's along those lines, I know. And there was a lot of changeover. And that might have been one of the reasons that...
That communication with the transition.
That those things being slipped off.
But, but chairman, I ask, in relation to Commissioner Freeman, that this policy that we talked about, if you would capture that, I know it's going to be mentioned in minutes, but if you would capture that, how we got to this, this point of where taxes being taken out, um, property under mortgage, that's the way that we outlined here, so that we'll have it for reference in the future.
Okay, yes, we can, we can do that and have it specific, yeah.
Okay, a motion's on, on. Do we want, with this, first, I think Commissioner Jordan, you did, or Ms. Spence, do you want to include, uh, Evans and Riddick?
I will, I will upend my motion to include, uh, Crystal Riddick, Evans.
And the second person who seconded, I believe, was Commissioner Freeman, or your concurrence?
And that is parcel number ten zero two four nine eight. Am I correct?
Correct, yeah. Okay, um, any further discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. It's nice that we are able to help.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have to have a two-minute break? Okay, come on, guys. Where is this? Okay, listen, we're going to, um, Neil, Neil Rose is here. He's where he is, uh, Lane, but we need a motion to reappoint Captain Lane as tax administrator.
So are we, are we ready?
Sir.
We kind of need, she's got...
Well, I'm okay, I mean, I've already been...
Are we all in?
We're already out there.
I'm already...
Uh, Madam Chairman, uh, I will make a motion that we... Is it, you got it, all right.
Very slow.
Commissioner Freeman's saying...
Okay, uh, Mr. Jordan's back. Uh, and we were trying to accommodate a lot of different people. Um, a motion has been made and seconded to reappoint Captain Lane as our tax administrator for the county of Gates. Um, this motion's been made and seconded in discussion.
Oh, my goodness.
I'll be back.
I will give the passage that you would modify the motion to include the general statute of course.
Okay, that's part of the post.
What is the general?
What name?
What is the general?
Oh, you typed it, okay.
And the reason I said that is, I'm sorry, I was waiting. But the reason...
Okay.
Article that was due two years ago.
Article six, section seven.
Uh, article what?
Article six, section seven.
Of the, of the North Carolina Constitution.
That's what, that's what it required. Okay, because the general statute already requires the involvement of the tax collector and assessor. I know we do that. And by the administrator, I was, uh, I wanted to find out what that was and so that's what we're doing, but, okay.
Is that right?
Well...
That's the one that's in the North Carolina statute. Okay, are we prepared for that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Captain Lane, your son is where?
Your son is where?
Then I will support and maintain.
Then I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As tax administrator.
As tax administrator.
Tax collector and tax assessor.
Tax collector and tax assessor.
And that I will not allow my actions as tax administrator.
And I will not allow my actions as tax administrator.
Tax collector and tax assessor.
Tax collector and tax assessor.
To be influenced.
To be influenced.
By personal or political friendships.
By personal or political friendship.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
Then help me out.
So don't forget. Thank you so much, sweet. Okay, um, I have before, and this is a last minute thing. Uh, and I'll ask the board, they will consider hearing a election line item justification for additional funding from the Board of Elections. You know, this is election time, October, November. Uh, would you amend the agenda so that we can consider this?
Yes, ma'am. I'll do the motion.
Yes.
I make a motion that we amend the agenda to accept the two items from Board of Elections. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion. Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, oh, okay. Before us is an additional request for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget, um, item for four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. If you read, it's for the additional part-time workers required to cover the office during normal office hours with the directorate on leave, training, seminars, and better outreach and election prep projects. Please note that the original amount of hours were only five hundred hours compared to nine hundred and ninety-nine hours, the maximum number of hours permitted. Unintended hours were used to assist in the office movement to do such things as pack and unpack and clean the new office. Hours and nine needed to cover, assist in office during this election in the east of San Antonio, of the directorate thereof. And you can see the item, line number eleven dash four one seven zero dash one eight one salary part-time. Additional night requested from twenty, oh, that's, uh... Okay, that, I'm sorry, I misread that. The line item is eleven dash four one seven zero dash one twenty-six salary part-time. Additionally, they are requesting line item number eleven dash four one seven zero dash one eight one salary part-time for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, um, three hundred and eighty-one hours and seventy-three, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and seven three, uh, cents. I guess that's five. Correct. Okay. Um, what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the requested additional funding for Board of Elections.
Now, I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded in discussion. Um, Mrs. Orton, um, when we did your budget for the budget year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, um, did we not fund it at the mic you asked for?
The mic, what I meant, because I was in the last fiscal year. And that was to include additional hours for the second primary that we had in June. For the new budget, you only gave me five hundred hours for part-time, when I only get nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Okay. I just want to be clear, you know, I remember you coming before us for more.
It was last fiscal year.
Any other comments?
No comments, uh, just, uh, would like to add that we had addressed, I recall, addressing some of those issues and we did not have all the figures in front of us. In time, we made it, that's total recommendations, if you can imagine.
Okay. Any additional comments? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, citizen comments? Anyone like a sound? No citizens comments? Before we go on to the commissioners' comments, it's nice to see our new sheriff here. Uh, he hasn't run away, he's still on the job.
Yes, ma'am.
And I hope he's still enjoying it.
I did, thank you very much, I did. You're the dean.
Sir, I'm the world's commissioner.
Okay. Yes.
You have a great opening, I was turning up too.
I am sorry, I was, thank you so much.
No, my name is Hayward Morgan, I live in one sixty-three Gattin Road. We both have a water problem. We all know that. But what my, what my problem is too, is I've been talking to Robert...
Winslow.
Winslow. Yes, and, uh, we have a drainage problem. And the water from the street is running into my property. And when it runs into my property, all of this mush and everything else comes in my property. But it won't go back out when it goes down. And right now, my water is still about six inches in the ditch at the road. While I can't drain, my, my property won't drain until this water is done. And while I talked to Mr. Winslow last week, well, he usually call me back or something. He didn't do it this time, because I'm quite sure it's because of the water problem.
I think it's a water problem.
Everybody understands the water problem. But what I'm after is, we have a lot of blockers down that street where it's so high. We have crossover on that street that the water is not crossing over, going north. And I would like something to be done about it because I can't clean them, my ditch, I can't clean my land now like I used to. It's because of straw, leaves, and all of that down there. And I need help.
I agree, uh...
I need some help there because, uh, I know we don't have money. But maybe the laborers that you have, having to do a little bit more work or let somebody else come and help me out on my problem at this time.
Well, yeah, it used to be. And used to be is used to be, you know that. When I was a child, I remember they would come out and clean the ditches, uh, and sun them months and, oh. They don't do that anymore. I only think they do is run that blade dying and that, they haven't run the blade dying in some of these roads in a long time.
If I, if I may, I spoke with, I can't think of the lady's name right now, it's in my office. But that is D and T's responsibility because I called and complained about the grass and about how bad the signs looked with weeds as tall as the signs.
Yes.
Um, about some of the flooding areas. And all of that's taken care of by different departments. She said, in order to get the weeds cut for the signs, they had to call the sign department. That wasn't even the responsibility of the crew that cut the roads. But she said, anything that's on the backside where, like you said, they used to come and cut, she said, that's the county maintenance yard's responsibility. And that they have one tractor and they have one person that does it. And that typically, they do that one time a year.
Well, my tree, that's, I thought they did it that short, maybe it wasn't even for them. Because the trees and the roots and everything in the ditch now is taller than me. So I'm quite sure that it had to be at least a year since they've been done. Now, what's happened is, these are in the ditch, the water won't go through. So all of the crap and everything down the street now is coming up, going into my property. While I used to, we'd take my fork and just keep throwing it over in the woods because it's, uh... I can't even do that now because I'm getting a little, a little slightly older now. And it's a little more stressful than it used to be.
And I tell you what, I'm glad you came to speak to us because I think you represent a tremendous number of citizens in Gates County since Julia visited us. I think we had eighteen inches in my neck of the woods in the month of September. That's about five inch every two, uh, every two days. And so, water is a problem. Uh, if you look at the roads, I mean, the swamps and all, uh, and at P's fourth road, those ditches not being cleaned out. And part of it's EPA won't let us do parts like they used to do it. There has to be just a blade, which doesn't do much.
I missed your, I missed your address, sir.
One sixty-three Gattin Road.
Gattin.
If you can't see the house, just look over the wall.
How many we all enjoy your work, my brother?
But I'm telling you, uh, it's, it's a mess there. And now what's getting me now is mosquitoes.
Oh, wow.
Now, are we spraying mosquitoes this year?
Yes, sir, the county is not sprayed prior to me coming to work.
But are we still paying taxes?
Yes, we, and we also do not have, we also, we also do not have anyone on the staff who's licensed to spray.
Okay, have license to spray?
From what I have been told, yes.
I have license to spray, yes.
Madam Chairman, uh, I think we can get in touch with DOT and have, uh, one of their representatives that is in charge of the road maintenance in regards to this. To have contact with this, have them come to the board commissioners and see if people want to do that. That we actually have any complaints with, uh, ditches not being cleaned out with drainage issues, especially with the type of water, uh, problems that we're having right now. And, uh, and have them give us an outline of, you know, what their plans are, uh, how they, how they can help, citizens can help, or just what we need to do uh, in order to get the water drained.
Yeah, Gates County is swamp land, we all know that. And, um...
And the motion I'll reflect, well, I'll reflect to the board, yeah.
It requests that I can imagine contacting DOT to come and talk to us about drainage issues in the county.
Have a representative, uh, from DOT.
Road secretary.
Road side branch company from DOT, uh, for the Gates County District. Become the board of board commissioners, uh, to discuss the drainage issues that we have in the county. And, uh, and help provide us with the... And, um, and help provide us with the measures we can take, and that they will abide, you know, the legal situations.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. I think I always agree that something would have problems throughout the county. I have part of my yard I haven't cut yet because it's too wet, uh, but it's, um, it is a problem. Okay, any other comments?
Uh, just, uh, some comments, Commissioner Jordan, uh, was, was far ahead of me. I was gonna share the number for the district engineer in Elizabeth City, uh, and I'm sure I, my kind of manager has that number. But I do, I am aware of the fact that if the district engineer gets a call, that, uh, that things are done a little bit more rapidly. Because, uh, they don't want that to go up the road, and it goes downhill from the district engineer. I do have his number, if you don't, I'm sure you have, you have three three one, okay.
Okay.
But I was gonna share that number with you, if you wanted to call the district engineer as well, sir.
Well, I'll give them one more shot, I mean, I, I will, because they want me to go to Raleigh, I don't hate that, I don't like to go where nobody's here.
Well, I think you came to the right place, and I, we will go to the district and see what we can do, probably get some action. Because you are one of many who have problems, and that's all, even though it might not be in your yard, but the drainage going from, well, from my way, goes from ran swamp, last year swamp, purchase mill pond, to the road. Uh, but we all have problems, and we have roads that still have problems with, as last I heard, has Black Mingle open?
No.
I don't think so.
No, uh, the report was given this morning there, and the control group, meaning they have not opened it, and, uh, DOT said it was closed for a reason, and it would remain closed until it's repaired.
And how they plan it hot?
No, closes well, that's the same issue.
How they, uh, signs?
Does, okay.
That's good, then.
Okay, that was open, but we still have it, this is in a week, and they're still closed, so we definitely have problems.
And if we need to, we can elevate it to Raleigh.
Yeah, we had, I don't know.
Well, Mr. Noranett, we, uh, we're gonna ask them to come see us, but we don't know what date they'll put it, so you need to be checking on our agenda, so you can be here when they come.
So you can give your personal testimony?
Yes, yes, uh, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Um, post-meetings this morning from the, um, the Board for, what was it?
I don't know. Well, we got a phone out, but we'll hear from you about emergency meetings.
Post-meetings this morning from, um, I'll meet the ELC at seven thirty. The engineer's here in Gates County today, his name is Andy, he's at the DOT now, somebody wants to call him, I can, I don't remember his last name.
Mulder.
Mulder, yeah, Andy Mulder, and he's here today. He's at this DOT office down here, I believe he, his office is there now, so just letting you know that he is here, and he's the one that called his higher-ups about Pliny Park Road and Black Mingle Road, and they're gonna remain closed. Our question is, if Matthew was to hit us, there's about seven residents on that road that we have to go around, will it, and come in, or we can just go? We were asking for a piece of steel, all types of things to open the road, but they said it was closed for reasons, so he's here, his name is Andy.
Mulder.
Yes. He's the engineer for our district.
In addition to Sheriff, yesterday afternoon, we were talking about these things, did, we met yesterday for a brief minute, and the reason I keep this out to us is food for thought, and, uh, and I know that, uh, Mr. Wynn is thinking about this as well, but military has, have rapid bridges that are, that are made to take a lot of weight, and, uh, and not very long. So I was, uh, asking, could we begin to look to have some of those done ahead to the county so they can be stashed or kept at, uh, DOT, uh, until, uh, until the usage could be. So, uh, uh, just as a mere fact, because that could go across, expand across a small, as we understand it, the cover is kind of crushing on Black Mingle maybe.
Has crushed, yes.
And, uh, that's the reason they don't want to dump it.
And it was possible, but we had barricades, we had barricades up, and people were continuously driving across those barricades and through them, and were going over, it's not the bridge on Black Mingle, it's the cover pipe from the road to the end. Down on the other side of, well, Mr. George is what his name is, and that pipe was really, really unstable, so somebody drives across it, so we dug about twelve, fourteen minutes of highway out, and took the rock out, so nobody backs across it.
And Mr. George, as I know, is a chicken, George.
That's right.
I think we all know this. Okay, thank you, Mr. Nor.
Alright, thank you.
And hopefully we can get some help for all, all our citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, um, to direct County Manager to contact the district engineer of DOT, to, uh, express concerns about drainage, and maybe that he could appear before us. All but express concerns, we, for actions tonight, and come before us and see what we can do and what DOT can do.
And bring any plans for what, uh, they're, they're gonna do going forward.
Yes, going forward. Um, in our discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so we direct County Manager on that. Any additional citizens' comments? Um, Sheriff, could you bring us up to date, up to date about what, uh, Mr. Wynn said this morning?
And I just got a, yes, ready, I have my.
Yeah, yeah, we have it all.
Okay, I just got a note from the Board, uh, uh, Hurricane Matthew has now turned east, um, and per their forecast, with their predicted spaghetti streams, um, he's not even, we're not even, as of this moment, at the update at twelve o'clock, that we're not going to be affected other than winds.
Okay.
Praise Lord, if he keeps winds to the right, then we're gonna be good, which is.
I've been praying for a hard wind.
Um, well, he's making that hard right, um, so that's the update right now, and that's all I have until six o'clock this evening.
Of course, we know that after the storms, they, they can.
He's moved so much in the last four days, he's gone east, he's gone west, but it's, it's up in the air, but right now, he's predicted spec, spaghetti streams, he's bearing a hard right back out to the rain.
We don't need exactly, and we're, we're in pain right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Or wind, because a lot of trees are gonna come down, and we have wind now.
So, we'll keep them busy.
Okay, thank you, be safe.
Thank you.
Okay, citizen comments? Oh, that was a citizen comment, okay, that was a citizen's comment. Okay, Commissioner's comments, I guess we'll start at the end of the table.
Uh, well, I certainly want to thank everyone for being here and, and for the participation that they've, uh, shown myself and the colle- and our colleagues here. Uh, these are opportunities that kind of present challenges as I, as I see them, and we're, we're faced with working together, which is a good thing. Uh, the, uh, the goals and plans that we look at, uh, are difficult conversations. And, and you see, as, as we've all participated in those today, uh, that these conversations really expose what I see and what I feel conflict and, and/or differences to, uh, to show how we agree and how we disagree to agree. So, uh, appreciate, uh, the, uh, my colleagues here for creating a stimulating thinking and professional growth, so thank you.
Appreciate everybody that attended this morning too, and it's, it's good to see different opinions hold out, and to realize that everything is not always cut and dry, yes and no, that there's different ways to look at the thing, and that we do, as a group, try to work for the very best of Gates County in all of our decisions, and we appreciate your input and your cooperation and understanding.
Alright, uh, I too thank everyone for being here, all the citizens, and thank you for the input that you've given. Um, I thank my colleagues for working together, you know, we as a board, we, we're five members, and it takes all five to make things happen. And, uh, I, I thank the colleagues for taking seriously about the issues and making the best informed decisions that are possible. Uh, I would ask, uh, on behalf of the citizens that have brought the question forth today, that, uh, our County Manager could keep in mind, uh, the issues they have brought forth in the elections office. And that, uh, we bring some recommendations to the commi- commissioners on how to proceed forward. We have not had a lot of the time to discuss how to resolve those, but, uh, certainly our County Manager could be working towards that, and, uh, bring something, uh, to us, and specifically, what was mentioned was phone lines, uh, cameras, uh, notary, and, uh, and the lights.
If I may comment, that's, we're gonna discuss that in closed session.
Okay, well, alright, County Manager already own comments, that's, that's great. So, but anyway, we, we thank you for the input, and we just, uh, ask that you do be mindful that this is time to vote, we need your votes, and, uh, we're gonna keep doing what we're doing, we need you all to do what you did. Thank you.
Alright, again, um, I would like to touch on what I've already heard, and that's, uh, just I appreciate this board, uh, and our County Manager, and all our county employees that bring forth to us the information that we need to make these decisions. And we are a great team, uh, Gates County, Gates County employees, uh, and we just appreciate the support that we get from the citizens, uh, and just thank you for your attendance today.
I too, I can thank y'all for attending, I thank today, sometimes it's not, decisions I made are not easy decisions, that we really do have to think, and all the repercussions, and, uh, and that makes it very difficult. Uh, but I think you see a board that takes their job seriously, I think you see a board that has respect for each other, and their opinions that we listen to, and that we have stability. We can disagree, but still be friends. I wish we could say that on a state and local, uh, and national level. I, why I think it could be if we work together, and learn to listen instead of trade insults. Uh, you know, that's why, that's why local government is a government close to the people, and I think is, uh, the best example of democracy in, in action. Um, you know, like I say, um, we have a great team, we have great county employees, and we're working to be better all the time, trying to be better all the time. We might not get it right every time, but we try, we have, honestly, we do all try. Uh, I did want, Miss Howell gave me, this is October, you know, October is a lot, is breast cancer month, but it's October, Residents' Rights Month, month, and so at, uh, two facilities, at Dinees and at, um, Gates House, um, there are, there are programs scheduled, I'm assuming for at Dinees.
These are all of that.
Uh, each Thursday at two o'clock, um, for the residents, um, Your Christian will be there on Thursday the sixth, tomorrow, they do a music program every month, I believe, correct?
Yes.
And also October thirteenth, October twentieth, and October twenty-seventh, there is a cook eye at eleven thirty, and certainly, um, if you have chance, drop in.
We'd love to have you because it's cook time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, did I hear a motion to, uh, to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight, uh, eleven, day on legal, and of legal matters, economic development, and real estate and personnel?
So, uh, second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come into closed session. Okay, is everybody, do I entertain a motion coming out of closed session?
So, move. So, move.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, um, coming out of closed session, we would like to direct County Manager to follow up on, on Board of Elections building issues, uh, and to report back to us at the next meeting.
Alright, Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Now, I'll second that, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded in a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, do I have, entertain a motion to adjourn till November the first? No, we're gonna do October.
The twenty fourth.
The twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth, yes.
Twenty fifth. At four thirty for a public hearing on taxes. Do I have a motion?
That's the point of it, right?
Correct, Tuesday at four thirty.
So, move.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, uh, all those in a discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, we are assessed until October the twenty fifth. Thank you.